And welcome, everyone. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of July 9, 2020 to order. For those who would like to join, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led tonight by our CFO and Treasurer, Nancy Polly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for doing the pledge. City Clerks, please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Protim Holsteg.
Here.
Mayor Kors.
Here.
All council is present.
Thank you. So tonight, I think we have a few, at least two presentations. Turn this over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The presentation this evening, council had asked that we periodically give an update on projects, the list of projects, particularly those that have stalled. And so Assistant City Manager Marcus Fuller has a presentation. He's going to go through several of the projects and give you some highlights of where they are in the process. Marcus, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. If I could have the presentation? Thank you. We have some notable successes, particularly with residential projects. The first one, 64 at the Riv. As you know, this was a 64-unit condominium complex that was approved by the City Council in February of 2017. They started construction that year, and they're nearly complete. Last I checked with the builder, they have sold 50 of the 64 condominiums. So that one is a success. The next one we talked about is the Canyon View Project down on East Palm Canyon near the Rimrock Shopping Center. This one is delayed, but it's delayed for a purpose because it was originally going to proceed in advance of a major flood control project being completed by the Riverside County Flood Control District. That was going to require temporary concrete drainage channels around the whole site to address the flooding problem in that area. But that, those channels are no longer necessary once the Flood Control District proceeds with their project, and they're going to be revising their landscape plan accordingly. The Chalk Affordable Housing Project at Indian and San Rafael Drive, or also known as the Monarch, it's still pursuing its tax credit financing. As I understand it, they did apply this last month for tax credit financing. The agreement that we have with them is essentially requires them to become fully financed by June 1 of next year. So to the extent that they can do that, they'll proceed and construct this important project. Moving south, this is the former Cameron Project, or now it's called the Cody Place Project, South Palm Canyon in Mesquite. This project, as you know, was delayed for many years. Toll Brothers acquired the property last March, and if you have seen, they've done significant construction of onsite improvements with streets and utilities. They have their community building under construction, and they have building permits in process for their model complex, which they expect to start by August, and they hope to be open for sales in September. And I've been speaking with these residential builders. All of them say that there's strong interest in purchasing new residential construction in Palm Springs. Right across the street, this is the Alon Residential Project. Again, it was subject to some delay. It was acquired recently by Far West Industries in October of 2018. They, as you have seen, have stockpiled, took advantage of all of the dirt being removed out of the Palm Canyon Wash and have stockpiled it on the site. The majority of the backside of this property is on the tribal reservation and requires some extensive cultural monitoring, and so they're working through that process and intend to start grading by August. And building plans have also been submitted for Plan Check, and they expect to be in construction on their model complex by October. This is another very successful condominium project that was approved recently in July of 2018. It's called the Enclave. It's at Baristo and Hermosa. They are constructing 30 condominium units. They've already issued 15 permits, and they've already sold at least eight as of last count. So that one is another successful residential project in Palm Springs. As well as Ascena, I just have it noted here, they're significantly built out. It's been a long-term development project. They did have a recent new tentative map approved by the council for some new single-family lots up in the northwest corner of the site near Vistacino and Ginatri Trail. So they're working through the process of developing that last tract of homes. This, again, another successful residential project called the Icon on North Palm Canyon and via Olivera, or Kai Alvarado, sorry, 46 condominium units. All of the condominium units are under construction. 36 of last count were sold, so they're in their last phase and will be completed sometime this year. The Living Out Condominium Project on Talkwoods Canyon and Hermosa Drive, it is a newer project that was recently approved by City Council last June, so only a year ago. So they have a two-year timeframe on their entitlements. Plans have been submitted for review, and we're hopeful they'll be in a position to construct the project later this year. Mirelon, again, this is another project that got delayed going back to the Great Recession in 2008. It was part of a big bankruptcy that took many years for it to come out of, and I'm happy to say that they are going strong, with strong sales and moving forward. They have three different builders involved, building different types of homes. Model homes for the first builder are open, and I'm happy to say, all of the units in the first phase of that first builder's tract have been sold, and model homes for the other builders are going to be open in September. So there's strong interest in this new community. But across the street, or I'm sorry, near that project is the Palermo Tract. It was a half-finished condominium complex that, again, got delayed due to the Great Recession. The remaining vacant part of the property has been in and out of escrow with different buyers. We are pursuing the resolution of the permanent fencing around the site, particularly along San Rafael Drive. An active code case has been opened, and we're pursuing with the current owner of that property to resolve that issue. Unfortunately, the Serena Park Project has been delayed. This is a project that went through extensive review with the city and has a development agreement with a specific performance schedule, and it was involving multiple phases of residential development. In reaching out to the developer, we were advised that they were invoking their force majeure clause in the development agreement due to the pandemic. They had been attempting to work with some of the builders to purchase some of the tracts and are still pursuing financing to proceed with the project. Here closer to City Hall on Talkwoods Canyon Way and Feral Drive, we have the Vibe Residential Project, again, a very successful project, 72 single-family homes and 114 condominium units. Almost all of the condos have been constructed. Many have already been sold, and the housing, the single-family housing is under construction, and again, a strong interest for buyers in this new community. They expect to build out by next summer. The Racket Club, unfortunately, we've seen on Indian Canyon Drive, has been essentially stagnant for many years. The ownership there was, were unable to pursue completing the development that was approved. And so it's currently registered as a vacant property, and we're pursuing code enforcement actions on that to make sure they comply with our codes, with property maintenance standards and the vacant building ordinance. Moving on to hotel projects, you did approve recently an extension of the building permit for the Andaz Hotel. I had a conversation with the ownership recently, who have made some progress. They've entered into a contract with a firm for several hundred thousand dollars to secure and stabilize and protect their investment, and they've also engaged the design team, the architect and all the engineers, to basically go through all the construction drawings and resolve some of the issues that occurred during construction, which it turns out led to, was the main reason for all the delays that were caused with the prior contractors. Their intent is to have those plans completely updated, resolving any of the issues that were presented by the two prior contractors. were presented by the two prior contractors, so that there's a clean set of drawings that will allow them to rebid the project and move forward with construction without any of the problems that occurred in the past. So they still intend to restart work by the end of the year. The Bode Hotel, again, this didn't get a lot of press, but this is a new hotel being constructed here in downtown, and it includes 30 hotel suites right essentially across from our Baristo Garage. This is a rendering of that project, and if you've seen, they've completely graded the site, installing all of the onsite utilities and other construction. And they intend to be open by next summer. And so that's a nice, successful project. Regretfully, the Dream Hotel, as we know, it started construction. It proceeded with its first phase of the underground garage and the foundation for the hotel, and at that point, they were working towards securing their financing to go vertical. And at that time, with the COVID pandemic, they again have invoked their force majeure clause in their agreement and are working through resolving and pursuing some financing to the extent they're able. And we will continue to monitor for their performance in accordance with the agreement. The Orchitrine Hotel, you're familiar with, that was recently approved by the council this last May. And so that approval and the agreement has a performance schedule with the next milestone being submittal of a building permit by May of 2021. So we'll continue to coordinate with the developer there to make sure they're on schedule. And then unfortunately, the Tova Hotel. This has really been frustrating for staff. We had hopes that this project would proceed. Unfortunately, it has not. The city has pursued code enforcement action. In fact, there's been multiple citations issued. Total amount of citations to date are $69,000, and the city attorney's office is now pursuing legal remedies in court to allow the city itself to abate the blight caused by this unfinished The Virgin Hotel, that project is subject to a development agreement. The development agreement has a performance schedule. The next milestone for that is not until September of 2022, and that would allow the grid development to complete their designs and submit their plans into Plan Check. And I've added a few commercial projects because we are seeing some success with new projects being approved and proceeding into construction. That includes the complete renovations of the former Nott's Soaks City as the Palm Springs Surf Club. It's a phased project, and they're in Phase 1, which involved upgrading their mechanical pump rooms and other equipment for the enlarged wave pool. Phase 2 is the enlarged wave pool and other areas, and then Phase 3 is the restaurant and fitness and spa center. So that work is underway, and we look forward to its completion. There's a new quick quack car wash that's approved, had a vacant commercial pad at the Stater Brothers Shopping Center on Vistachino, circled there in red. So we look forward to them breaking ground. They have all their approvals in place, so we're essentially waiting for them to pull the trigger and break ground on that project. And I'm happy to say that we have a new Starbucks drive-through approved and ready to move forward into construction on a vacant commercial pad there at the northwest corner of Vistachino and Sunrise in the Albertson's Shopping Center. So we look forward to that breaking ground soon. And we have a large commercial complex up in the north end of town, off of I-10 and Garnett Avenue, 103,000-square-foot commercial complex. That's been approved. They have everything in place, and we're waiting for them also to break ground on that. And that's a rendering of those buildings. And then lastly, I think it's important to note, for those that don't know, as technology improves, you know, the public might see that some of the older wind turbines that have been installed going back to the '60s, '70s, and '80s do get replaced from time to time in what's called a decommissioning. And as the technology has improved, as in this case, you can remove 363 of the smaller wind turbines and replace them with 20 of the new ones. Now, mind you, these new turbines are 500 feet tall, ground to tip of the blade, but it will remove all of the clutter. In that diagram, you can see all the little purple points are all the smaller wind turbines being removed and decommissioned and replaced with the blue dots, which are the larger wind turbines. And this is a rendering that basically shows what will, you can see in the background, some of the smaller wind turbines, and those are replaced and cleared up with the larger wind turbines. So this project, they have pulled their permits, and they're going to be proceeding with construction in the next month. So, Mr. Mayor, that completes the presentation on the status of all these projects.
Great. Thank you so much for that. And if you put that, you know, with some of the information on the website, so the public has access to it, that would be appreciated. Just for the public's benefit, I just want to explain what a force majeure provision is, since it's a legal term that people might not be familiar with. And it refers to an event that is outside the control of the parties and prevents that party from performing on a contract. So the COVID pandemic and the emergency situation is being invoked by some of these developers regarding their projects because it impacts their ability to move forward with it. So I just want to explain that legally. City Attorney can add anything if he thinks I didn't.
Nope, that was very good.
Hey, anyone else have any questions on that presentation? Okay, thank you very much. You know, we're trying to do this quarterly as an update for us in the community, so they know the status of these projects. I think the next presentation, City Manager, is on enforcement?
Yes, Lieutenant Vegas is here with us, just checking. Chief, are you presenting or lieutenant? Great. Lieutenant Vegas is here, Mayor and Council, and we've asked the lieutenant to give us a brief update on the enforcement over the last week with regard to the COVID. As you know, there's a lot of rules in place, social distancing, face coverings, and what the lieutenant's going to explain is basically how they've been addressing it, the extra staff we've had, just to make sure we get the message out so people are in compliance. And I'll turn that over to Chief Lieutenant. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Staff. So I just want to report a lot of our proactivity and spot checks and inspections our code officers have been doing. Just want to report, they've been extremely busy and doing an outstanding job. So starting off with the downtown and business checks, they did a total of 76 business checks of ensuring that restaurants and everybody with social distancing, wearing facial coverings, and no businesses were cited. They were all found to be in compliance. Also, from the last council meeting, the direction was that we were going to do more enforcement with the public on sidewalks and reminding people of facial coverings as they came into the city of Palm Springs. One of the things that we did do was deploy our electric signboards downtown with signage saying that, reminding people mandatory face coverings and social distancing. That was one part. The second part of that was public announcements by our police officers and code officers. We did a total of 23 public announcements during the weekend, which were very well-received. We had a code officer particularly take it to another level and kind of sounded like you were going to get on a ride to Disneyland by the time and receive some applause while going through downtown. So it was very well-received. So as they did foot patrols, and our bike officers also assisted, they contacted about 150 people. Most of the people, upon seeing the officers, they put on their face coverings, and if they didn't, once they were contacted, they would go ahead and, all of them complied with putting the face covering. So needless to say, it is working, it is impactful, and it's definitely appreciated by not just the businesses, but even everybody who was out there gave nothing but positive remarks about our enforcement efforts and the fact that people are complying and listening to our direction. So that's our enforcement efforts, what we did downtown. We also were busy with vacation rental calls. We had a total of 34 vacation rental calls that resulted with 11 citations being issued. So for 4th of July weekend, it was busy as expected, and I think you should be very proud of your code enforcement team for their efforts. And I'm ready to answer any questions if you have anything.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I just want to thank you and Code Enforcement for the great work. I've heard on several meetings with both residents, the District 3 meeting I had, as well as from businesses, that they really appreciate all the extra effort that Code Enforcement is making and feel that it's really making an impact. So I just wanted to thank you for your work. I see there are some questions. Councilmember Middleton.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, you stole all of my lines, but I wanted to add my thanks to Lieutenant Vegas and all of the team from Code Enforcement and Palm Springs Police for their work. It really makes a difference.
Mayor Protem Holstich?
Thank you. I just have a quick follow-up question. You explained the calls about vacation rentals and the citations. Could you explain if those are COVID-related, kind of different citations, or if it's other citations that we usually see, just the public is asking questions about vacation rentals?
Yes, Mayor Protem. These citations were related to the vacation rental ordinance, having to do with either music, noise, or cars parked in the driveway. Those were the citations.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Great. And those numbers were Friday, Saturday, Sunday night, right? Lieutenant?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. City Manager, do we have any other presentations?
That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items, any council member, for the like removed from consent calendar for separate discussion and/or vote? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove for separate discussion 1C, as in Charlie, 1F, as in Frank.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. And I'd like to remove 1D and 1G. So we need a motion to accept the agenda with the exception of 1D, 1, I'll get my handwriting, which is hard to read, 1C, 1D, 1F, 1G? Is that right, Councilmember Middleton? Okay. Motion by Councilmember Woods, second by?
Second.
Councilmember Garner.
Councilmember Woods.
Sorry, is that you? Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Holstich.
Yes.
Mayor Coors.
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. City Attorney Ballinger, please provide a report of the closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and members of the public. The City Council met earlier this afternoon in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Great. This item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda items or items you are speaking about. Please note the general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the meeting. I will note there is one public hearing where we've already opened and closed and taken testimony, but people have been advised they can speak during this upcoming public comment item on the 2A CDBG. This will be the time to speak, and the City Clerk has advised people of that. We'll be calling them during this time period. The Clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone, so please begin.
Chris Duggan, you're live with the City Council, and you have two minutes, and you can begin.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Chris Duggan, California Restaurant Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on Item 4B this evening. The CRA would like to register our strong opposition to the proposed ordinance before you. Before I address Item 4B, I'd like to note, the CRA and the restaurant industry share everyone's concerns regarding litter abatement and the decreasing capacity of our landfills. We are strong advocates for packaging mandates that require all food packaging be recyclable and compostable. So as it relates to Item 4B this evening, as we have all witnessed over the past few months, restaurant owners, managers, and our beloved team members have been working diligently to ensure dining public would feel welcome and safe when they visited under the new health and safety protocols placed on us by the state and the county health orders. Unfortunately, even with all these protective measures put in place, just weeks ago and spilling into this week, the state has ordered closures of all dine-in restaurants in 26 counties, including Riverside. Today, sadly, many small family-owned restaurants in Palm Springs that are fighting to survive now find themselves faced with potentially more mandates proposed in Item 4B. The CRA firmly believes the proposal before the council this evening goes in the complete wrong direction, and at times, our industry can least afford it. Policy proposals such as mandating reusable foodware for all dine-in will only increase the infrastructure costs inside our restaurants, create physical space challenges, and other issues. Additionally, proposing product bans on food packaging lead to alternative packaging that could be two to three times as high. And lastly, we're very concerned about the ban on plastic food service ware, as we are already operating on razor-thin margins, and our consumers find the functionality of the plastic foodware to their liking. So, in closing, again, I want to thank you for your time, working with you all, and respectfully ask that you reject the proposal before you tonight. CRA believes a better approach would be to begin stakeholder outreach with Palm Springs CRA and our restaurants.
Chris, your time is over.
And work collaboratively on waste reduction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect.
Ms. Stephanie Holstich, you are now live with the City Council, and I have two minutes to provide your comments. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Holstich, and I'm an environmental scientist. I'm calling today to voice support for the proposed ordinance and strict plastic bans in Palm Springs. We are in a plastic pollution crisis, which is also contributing to the climate crisis and harming at-risk species and human health. Recent research has shown that only 9% of the plastic ever made has been recycled. In California specifically, only 15% of single-use plastic is recycled. Chemicals and plastics leach out into food and beverages, especially when exposed to heat, such as when taking home leftovers in a plastic container. Many of these chemicals have been linked to reduced fertility, cancer, and metabolic disorders. Microplastics have been found in sediment, rain, salt, sugar, honey, beer, tap-and-bottled water, the air that we breathe, and human feces. Humans are consuming a minimum of 50,000 pieces of plastic particles every year with unknown health impacts. Microplastics are polluting even the most remote and deepest parts of the earth, including Joshua Tree National Park. We are beyond the point of doing the bare minimum to address this urgent crisis. Scientists have recently assured the public that the use of reusable containers and bags -- and bags is safe during the pandemic. Single-use plastic is a relatively new invention that did not become widespread until the late 1960s, and therefore, alternatives are readily available. Palm Springs is already behind many other cities in implementing these measures and taking charge to significantly reduce waste. There's never going to be a perfect time to address the plastic and climate crises, and it is imperative that we act on these issues now. For these reasons, I support at a minimum implementing a modified version of the option two with the inclusion of a ban of styrofoam in plastic bags and a timeline of when the other measures will be phased in. Thank you.
Ragda Zachariah, you are now live with the City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ragda Zachariah. I just want to piggy and build on your last comment at the previous meeting on educating the public about COVID. And I'm one of the people who fled Palm Springs 4th of July because I knew everybody would be pouring in here. And I just have a few points I hope... I visited a few cities on the ocean side, and one of the things they have done is, on the sidewalk, they had arrows going one direction on one sidewalk and going back another direction on the other sidewalk. They also, which really, I felt like every time I walked in one of those little towns, it was a reminder of what I need to do without feeling I'm being pushed on or being court-martialed. They also had really nice polite signs about COVID. So every go you wear, you could feel the essence of how people are reacting to that. And I thought that the arrows going back and forth kind of took care of the congestion problems. I also would like to suggest, I'm a firm believer of educator also, as a human being, I will be listening. If you can add on your agenda or to your staff, a local prominent physician who would be talking to the public, educating us. Because as you know, we all get emotional on social media, we all, and I'm one to be blamed for that, to want to act as if I know everything or issue new orders. But I think if you add a local physician on your agenda to be part of your team going through that to talk to us, or maybe you can come and do a presentation, I think that would be of great value of educating the public. And then last but least, I strongly recommend, and that's what I've seen in other small towns on the coastline, and by the way, most of them, they had their... Okay. All right, I'm done. Just have a table or kiosk downtown with information, because there is so much misinformation out there.
Ragda.
Yes, I'm done. Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon.
You too.
Mr. Anderson, you're now live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments. You may begin.
Thank you, Brad Anderson, City of Ratsboro. I just wanted, I have three different items I wanted to discuss tonight, but I was informed by the city clerk today that I only have two minutes for all agenda items, or in a public hearing items. And I would have to argue that most people wouldn't know the difference between a consent item and a public hearing item. And so I think this is justly unfair that this is a requirement of your city, and this is really kind of a slap in the face to the good intentions that the law provides for public comments at meetings. But 1B, I am opposed. Number 1C, opposed. And 5E, I'm neutral on until the discussion. And again, public comments, when you have public comments, and you don't get to hear the board reports or the staff reports, and you're only two minutes for the entire agenda items, that's completely unfair to the public. And I will look into this further, and I will send written comments too. Thank you very much.
Two minutes to provide your comments. Roy Clark.
But 1D, I am opposed. Number 1...
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
If you could mute... Okay, Mr. Roy Clark, you are now live with the Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Coors, Mayor Protem Holstich, City Council members and city staff. This is Roy Clark. I am chairperson of the Sustainability Commission. I am speaking on item 4B. I'd like to emphasize some of the points in the staff report provided by Patrick Talarico, manager of the Office of Sustainability. The Office of Sustainability and the Commission have been working on ways to reduce plastic waste since 2018. In February of this year, we were ready to present options to the council for discussion, but we paused because of the need to deal with the COVID-19 and budget crises. However, it's important to keep long-term threats to our health and our environment in mind and proceed with the discussion of plastic waste reduction while being sensitive to the impact that COVID-19 has had on the city and local businesses. The staff report does not propose a specific ordinance. It does include options for levels of activities, from simply extending the request-only restriction on plastic straws, to things like banning all styrofoam foodware or requiring reusable foodware for food consumption in restaurants. It also includes options for phasing activities, starting out with only limited requirements and adding broader and more stringent requirements with time. We are looking for guidance from the council on how to proceed. This will help to develop a draft ordinance and focus feedback from local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments. He's being reconnected. There he is.
What happened there?
Mr. Mayor, public comment has concluded.
Yes. Thank you. The next item is City Council Subcommittee and City Managers' comments and reports. Anyone have some reports or updates they want to share, any deals they want to say? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to give a report, as you know, in the cities represented to the Riverside County Transportation Commission. And this is going to be on the status of rail to the Coachella Valley. And it's an interim report, but there's been some changes within the last few weeks that I think all of my colleagues need to be aware of and that the public should be aware of as well. Last year, the RCTC won a competitive contract for approximately $6 million that would have provided funding to build a rail station in India. And that rail station in India was very important in that one of the areas that we were trying to get train service to the Coachella Valley was in connection with the Coachella Music Festival. And Golden Voice has worked very closely with the transportation authorities throughout Southern California in supporting that project. But something that was important to them was that there be a stop in India. And so funding had been made available for that, and we were working through the state authorities and through RCTC and other rail authority in Southern California to try to get a demonstration project that would, for 2021, provide rail service simply on a few days during the course of April of 2021, when the music festival is taking place. That required negotiations with the Union Pacific Railroad. Union Pacific has generally been very reluctant to provide any rail service for the public. It is track from the city of Colton out through the Coachella Valley. All of that track is owned by the Union Pacific Railroad. And so as members of the public, we do not have any access rights to that rail, with the exception of Amtrak that has access rights. At first, there was conversation taking place. Then approximately six months ago, Union Pacific took a stance that they had absolutely no interest in seeing a station built in India. They thought that would slow down their traffic. And they had absolutely no interest in sharing their track, even on a part-time basis, for the Coachella Festival. Ultimately, RCTC has surrendered, plans to surrender the $6 million because there is simply no reason to believe that Union Pacific will change their view on sharing their track. Union Pacific believes very strongly that what is needed if there is to be passenger rail traffic to the Coachella Valley is the building of a third rail track from Colton into the Coachella Valley. That's approximately 75 miles. The cost of an additional track is approximately $12 to $14 million per mile. So we are looking in hard costs for construction, somewhere in excess of $900 million to build the additional rail track. Just to give you some comparison, $12 to $14 million per mile for rail, and we are building through RCTC additional freeway lanes on the I-15 right now at approximately $8 million per mile. So significantly more expensive per mile to build rail than to build freeway. We're also, if this third track were to be built, what it would provide is access for two round trips to Los Angeles per day for the Coachella Valley. Certainly, there will be a tremendous amount of evaluation between RCTC, other rail authorities in Southern California, and the state over the course of the next many months and years. But to put a very simple dollar value to it, we are looking at something on the order of $1 billion in construction and annual maintenance cost to bring rail service to the Coachella Valley. And that would provide rail service passengers for two round trips. The cost-benefit on that is going to be extremely difficult to justify. Thank you.
Thank you, I guess. Thank you for sharing.
It wasn't good news.
Even though it's not good news, it's important. We in the community know, so thank you. Any other council member comments? Councilmember Garner?
Sure. So I'm going to start off with some bad news too, but then we're going to get into good news. And so I know a lot of the members of the community know that there is an act of violence at the community center at James O. Jesse this week. The community center is a welcoming place. It hosts a lot of activities for our community and residents, and it was really upsetting to see the center targeted. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone in Desert Highlands Gateway Estates know that, you know, I stand with you, and it's not something that we want to see, but it is a reality for many people. And it's a clear reminder that there are racist actions that take place in Palm Springs and the Coachella Valley, and we have to be proactive in supporting the Black community. And I think there's a lot of ways that we can do that, and the way we've talked about in the past. And so I'm looking forward to moving forward with a lot of those things. But on to some other events. We also have kicked off our census week this week. So on Tuesday, we started off with an online day, trying to just get out the word with social media. And then yesterday, we had a caravan through the neighborhoods, which was really fun. We drove through, actually all of District 1 was where we went, starting at Demuth Park, going into Veterans Tract, and then into Coyote Run and Golden Sands and nearby areas. And so it's really fun. If you heard honking, that was us trying to raise awareness about the census. There was popsicles, and Parks and Rec was amazing, and they had costumes. And I think a lot of people came out and waved, and we gave them information about the census. We really encourage all of you to fill out the census if you haven't already. You can do it online. Probably are getting bombarded with mailers like I am. So please take some time to do that. We also passed out census information today at the food bank at James O. Jesse, which council missed, but I assure you it was happening. And then tomorrow, right, tomorrow, Friday and Saturday, there's going to be census information at the movie that's going to be at the Camelot Theaters. There's going to be a drive-in movie. But they're showing the new movie called Palm Springs. I actually don't know anything about it, other than it's a comedy. So we'll be there too, making sure everyone knows that we're around. And I think that's it for now.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for your work on... Anyone else? Mayor Protem Holstich?
Thank you. I just want to echo Councilmember Garner's comments about the census week. Thank you to our Census Committee for going with us and spending a few hours driving through neighborhoods and talking to residents about this census. A lot of people put in really good work to make that happen. And also, I want to shout out to our city staff, who is really incredible too. We had our library director, our Parks and Rec director. We had our Office of Neighborhoods Involvement. We had staff from Parks and Rec, who are really amazing, and they really brought the fun. And they were in costumes in 110-degree heat. So huge commitment from our staff and our committee to get the word out about this census. So that was really fun. And we still only have about 50%, a little bit more, of residents in Palm Springs who have completed their census. So we're asking everyone this week to post on social media, talk to your neighbors and friends, asking the City Council to all post on social media, asking One PS Neighborhoods to lead that effort to make sure everyone in Palm to lead that effort, to make sure everyone in Palm Springs completes their census, because that's more federal dollars that we get for our residents. So thank you to Councilmember Garner, but it was so much fun, I wanted to talk about it too. The other announcements I have is we have set our listening session that the council gave direction on to move forward in doing. And so we have our listening session on policing, discrimination, and racism in the city, and that's happening July, let me make sure I get the right date, July 18th at 11:00 a.m. It'll be on Zoom. And so people can participate. There's a landing page on our website where you can go about the listening session and learn about all of the details, how to participate on Zoom. And we're also encouraging people to submit either written public comment, we're also allowing people to submit audio files or short videos that they can submit to the city council. We wanna make sure it's accessible. And we'll also have interpreters in Spanish and ASL interpreters as well. So if you need any help participating in the listening session, you can contact the city clerk, and their office can help you participate, and we really hope everyone does. We wanna, and just hear from everyone, and it's an opportunity for council to just listen to people in the community, and I think it'll be a really important conversation. I just have a few other short announcements. So one is that as the Chair of the SEVAG, the Association of Government Homelessness Task Force, I wanted to announce that we're having our next meeting, July 15th. That's on Zoom as well. And you can contact me if you need more information about that, but it is at 10:00 a.m. And there's a few announcements that will be happening at that meeting. We're getting a report from the county. The county has gotten significant homelessness dollars to spend on emergency shelter and other uses that have been in the news. So we'll be talking about that. And a new announcement is that the county has found a new location for the overnight homelessness shelter in Palm Springs. The county initially had it at Palm Springs High School, but the school needs it back to resume schooling. And so the new location is at the Palm Springs United Methodist Church on Alejo. And it's open now. It's operated by Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, and the hours are 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And the city and mayor, the mayor and I have worked with the county to make sure, you know, they're good enough hours and people can get services there. So that's really important for everyone to know, that the shelter continues to be open, it's just moved in location. And my last announcement is that I'm holding a town hall or a Zoom meeting for District Four issues, and that's happening July 15th at 3:00 p.m. So if anyone would like to participate in that who lives in District Four, you don't have to be associated with One PS, although the One PS reps attend as well, you can email me or contact City Hall, and we can get you to participate in that. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Garner.
So one more thing to add is commission interviews are starting up again. So if you applied for a commission, especially if you applied recently in January, February, we haven't forgotten about you. Since it looks like we're gonna be doing Zoom meetings for quite some time, we're gonna start resuming commission interviews and getting those fully staffed. I think Parks and Rec and library interviews are coming up, and then we'll start filling in any other vacancies that we have. So if you're interested in being on a commission, this is the time to put in that application. And remember, even if there's not an opening on the commission you're looking at right now, you can still submit an application, just so it's, so we're aware, because sometimes people do decide that they need to leave a commission earlier than their term expires. So thank you very much, and all that information is on the city website.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so I just have one or two things. So first, later we'll be talking about the issue of a letter that Councilmember Middleton and I wanna send to our representatives about the allocation by the state of CARES Act funding to cities. But I wanna sort of bring up some information on it now, because that I think is the second last item on the agenda, and it could be late, and I think this is very important, and I wanna make sure the public knows this. So in the state allocation of significant amount of money they received in CARES Act funding, they split it in three different buckets. The one was to the six largest cities in the state at $174 per person. The next, seven largest cities received $85 per person, and the rest of the cities received $12 per person. And I just wanna share a little bit about the result of that, because I'll just use the city of Riverside as an example. Nothing against the city of Riverside, good for them for getting a lot of money, but they have seven times more residents than Palm Springs, yet they're receiving 50 times more funding to cover their staffing costs, to provide help for their residents and help for their businesses. So we received just $600,000, which is $12 per resident. They received $28 million, which is $85 per resident. It took the nine Coachella Valley cities, which have 16,000 more residents, when you combine them, than the city of Riverside, yet our nine cities combined are receiving, let me say it the other way, the city of Riverside is receiving six times more money than all of our cities combined. And just an example, India, which has a third of the residents of Riverside, is receiving about a million, while the city of Riverside is receiving 28 million. It is clearly outrageous that our residents and our businesses are valued so much less. It's fine to do this for population, the bigger cities should get more money. But if you're doing it for population, it should be equal per person in the state. And this, we've seen this over and over again. The 13 largest cities have worked together, and the legislators of those cities work together, to advocate for a disproportionate share of state funding, because they have so many of the legislators. And I still think to, you know, our Assembly Member and other mayors, and we really need to move forward to, one, publicize this, because it doesn't seem that there's any attention paid to this discriminatory allocation, and no explanation for why some cities are getting 85 and some are getting 12, other than they're part of this group of 13. Some of the big cities are dictated by the federal government, but not all of them. And so the rest was divided in an incredibly unfair way, and we saw it with homeless funding. It was the 13 big cities and the counties just like this that got the bulk of the funding disproportionate, and we got $10 million, the only city not in the Big 13, because we spent so much time advocating, and our Assembly Member Chad Mays went to bat for us. And this came very quickly from the government and the leadership, and, you know, we'll talk later about the actions we can take, but this is an ongoing problem in our state, is how small cities are getting funded. And this is a really horrific example at a time when people are suffering so much, and this is backfilling a lot of the deficits in these other cities in a much more significant way than we possibly can. And I just want our residents to be aware of it. I hope the media takes some attention to it. This is a really important issue, and I wanted to bring that to light. Do you wanna add anything, Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you for what you've just said, I'm not gonna repeat it. But beyond an evaluation simply based on population, revenue lost because of COVID is not consistent with population. We know that cities like Palm Springs, that are heavily reliant on tourism, were hurt far more than those cities that are not reliant on tourism. We know that cities that are reliant on sales taxes have also been hurt, because people have been shopping and buying less over the last many months. So we need to factor into any evaluation what has been the actual revenue that has been lost by cities due to COVID. And that did not take place, it was not even a consideration. As we begin to reopen, we're gonna see the same thing happening that we saw over this past weekend. We had significant expenses related to code enforcement and police activity, because people were visiting our city, and we needed to have people to remind them, to have face coverings, and to follow up to make sure that happened. If we are going to recover safely, those places where people are going to are gonna have to have the resources to be able to put the code enforcement and police officers on the street to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. And just briefly, since someone watching texted me, there was a little gap. My computer, actually, my husband's James computer that I'm using froze, and I needed to get him, because I didn't have the password to get logged back in. So I apologize for that, but that is the result of Zoom. It's much better than previously, when I had lost a bunch of closed sessions. But I'm now gonna get his password written down, so I wanted to let people know. Councilmember Woods, are you raising your hand? Yeah, okay. You're muted, though.
If you're done, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I am.
Oh, I just, a couple of things that have been said that I just wanted to reiterate, and one that wasn't said. First of all, I wanna thank all of our residents and our businesses for being so great during this COVID crisis. You know, we have been, several of us council members have been on the phone with regional officials on the changing climate that happens almost hourly, and then trying to push that information out to our citizens and everyone else out there. And for the most part, our citizens and our businesses are reacting brilliantly, and I cannot thank them enough for trying to flatten that curve and keep us safe here in Palm Springs. But I really wanted to emphasize our boards and commissions, and that if you have an interest, be it a library, or in human rights, or you're interested in the airport, or architecture and land use, anything that you think you might be interested in, and I'm sure there's a border commission that we have that you could serve on, all you really need to do is either email or call the city clerk and get an application in. You can even do it online, I believe. The city clerk can probably acknowledge that. But it's a great way to understand your municipal government, and us as a council have changed the rules, so it's much easier to become a board member or a commissioner at this point. And we've made our meetings in the evening to make it easier if you work. So I just wanna reinforce for people out there to consider applying, because it is within reach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Holstich.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one more report. I was gonna bring it up later, but since it's relevant to some announcements by council members. So I wanted to announce that we've started a working group on COVID safety enforcement and community education, and this arose from conversations the mayor had with a lot of stakeholders, businesses, and residents. People really wanna know all that the city is doing on enforcement and public education, and having sort of consistent communications and messaging as a campaign to get the word out. We're hearing a lot of complaints from people that, you know, we have tourists downtown, people aren't wearing masks, people aren't distancing, we wanna make sure our communities stay safe. So we're working on that together, and, you know, even though a lot of other agencies are getting funding to do a lot of this COVID-related work, they're getting funding to do enforcement, they're getting kind of bigger bailout compared to the city's really minimal amount that we've received, we're still being extremely proactive. I think it's easy to say that we're doing the most enforcement and proactive work in the region on this issue. And so we'll continue to do, and I'll continue to update the council and the public about what comes out of that working group, so that we can really all come together about what the rules are, and how to spread the word from visitors and residents alike.
Great. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, if I could make one announcement. The city's nomination period is now open, sorry. The city's nomination period is now open for council districts four and five. So if anybody's interested in running for election, please contact the city clerk's office. I'll walk you through the process and answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you. So the next item is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to exempt the consent calendar without the following items removed for separate discussion. Items one, B, C, S, and G.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by?
Mr. Mayor, clarification, I believe it was one, C, D, F, and G. Not B, but I could be wrong.
Let me look, because I pulled it, no, I pulled B.
B, as in boy.
Boy, B as in boy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, great. Motion by Mayor Protim Holstich, second by Councilmember Garner.
Councilmember Holstich, or, sorry, Mayor Protim Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
I.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
And Mayor Corse.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great. So let's go through the excluded items. The first one is item one, B, request to waive the requirements of the Palm Springs municipal code, section 2.60040C, related to the semi-annual update to public official statements of economic interest and public integrity disclosures. That report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is a request to waive the requirements related to a semi-annual updates to public official statements of economic interest and public integrity disclosures. This is a local requirement in which public officials must submit their updated forms if they had any material change of interest since their annual filing. Due to COVID-19, the annual filing deadline of April 1st was extended through June 1st, and the deadline for the semi-annual update would be August 1st. Staff recommends waiving the requirement for calendar year 2020 to avoid confusion, and in light of the, in light that in calendar year 2019, there were two semi-annual filings submitted, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. So I pulled it just for a question, and I got some feedback from folks that were concerned we weren't getting these reports, which are pretty easy to do the update online. So if people filed them in June, when would the next filing be, not until April of next year?
Correct. The next annual filing would be April of next year, and it would cover the period of January through December 31st.
And since it's supposed to be semi-annual, is there any reason we can't do it, you know, in August or September, because it's just an online update?
Certainly, if the city council did not wanna waive the requirement in totality, and instead want, preferred to extend the deadline, then staff would move forward with that.
And that would be my recommendation. Anyone else want to weigh in? I think it's important that people have this information, because we're still voting and doing everything. Mayor Protim Holstich.
Thank you. Thanks for pulling this, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you, so I think transparency measures are almost more important during an emergency, and I know governments have been waiving those, and it makes sense why this was a staff recommendation, because I just submitted mine by the deadline, June 1st. But I do think that we should have another one this year. So I'm wondering if staff's recommendation, I know we have this for all public officials, including commission members, and I know we don't have all of our commission meetings, and that might be a burden for commissioners, but I do support making sure that city council and the other public officials, like the city manager and the city attorney under this, do one later this year, so we don't wait until April to update votes. Is there a staff recommendation about commission members? Is that some of the thinking here too? Or do we think it'd be overly burdensome for them, and we should just do it to public officials, or should it be for everyone?
Certainly, Council, or Mayor Protim Holstich, I would recommend, if council wants to move forward with this, doing a deadline for October 1st, and then requiring the city council, planning commission, city attorney, and city manager, which are the 87200 filers and the finance director, to do the semi-annual update.
Thank you, that makes sense to me.
Anyone else? Councilmember Woods?
I was just gonna say, I would be in favor of that, but for anybody who's interested, the city clerk also puts our 700 forms online, so people can actually have access and transparency already, regardless of the city's extra effort that it makes, is that we are, have really done a lot for public integrity at this point. And it is all available with And it is all available with readily accessible right online from your keyboard.
And this form is not required under state law. It's one of the extra things that we uniquely do as a city to have more transparency. So I'm comfortable with that, too. So Mayor Protem Holstich, did you want to make that motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Protem Holstich, second by Councilmember Garner.
Mayor Protem Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Corse.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great. Thank you. The next item is item one C, letter of support for Assembly Bill 2218, Transgender Wellness and Equity Fund. I was pulled by Councilmember Middleton. I don't know if you want a staff report or you just want to comment on it.
Comment, I don't think I do. And I wanted to highlight this bill. This is a very important bill. It will provide $15 million in funding for transgender health clinics across the state of California. Since we've been looking at dollar figures per person based on the state's estimate of the number of transgender individuals in the state of California, it comes out to $68 and 68 cents per person in California. One of the things that everyone I know who is transgender has a story and an experience of discrimination in trying to access healthcare. It's why it is so important that we have transgender-focused facilities in our state, and that has been one of the really positive things that has occurred over the last decade. So I want to highlight this, ask for support, and I would like to also amend the letter that we are sending to thank specifically our assembly member, Chad Mays, who in committee voted for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? We have a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Middleton, second by Councilmember Garner.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Holstich.
Yes.
And Mayor Corse.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And the final item is one G, city, oh no, sorry.
F.
Pick one. The next one is one F, approved enrollment in County of Riverside Master Microsoft Enterprise Agreement for License of Microsoft Software. Councilman Middleton, would you like a staff report?
Aye. That is a mistake. I did not mean to pull one F. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do you know which one you meant to pull? Or do you want me to go to the next one while you look?
Go ahead and take a look.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we should approve, Ben, we should approve one F, though.
Yes.
So so moved.
Good point.
So moved to approve one F, which is the Microsoft agreement.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Woods, second by Mayor Protem Holstich.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilman Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Corse.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
And it was, by the way, the one I wanted to pull was one G, Mr. Mayor, which you've already pulled.
Okay. So we can both talk about that. So one G is city council support of Senate Bill 1410, COVID-19 emergency tenancies. And the main reason I pulled this was so we could get a staff report and let the public, who may not have read the really well-written staff report, to know what this is, because I think it's a really important step forward for the state to take this action. So, the city attorney, can you give us the staff report, please?
Yes, certainly, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is a request for the city council to consider supporting legislation that's currently pending before the California Legislature, Senate Bill 1410, or SB 1410. This is some somewhat unique legislation. As the council is aware, earlier this year and as late as last month, the city council adopted and extended its own moratorium on evictions if those evictions are related to non-payment of rent resulting from COVID-related purposes. In addition, the California Judicial Council has adopted an emergency rule that would essentially delay eviction actions that are actually filed in court, regardless of whether the eviction is COVID-related or not. What SB 1410 does is it attempts to strike a balance between the needs of property owners and renters. The way it does this is it creates incentives for rental property owners to defer the rent in exchange for a tax credit that's received by the property owner that could then be claimed by the property owner beginning in 2024. The way SB 1410 works is it provides for what's called an eviction relief agreement that property owners can offer to their tenants. It essentially defers the payment of rent for residential properties as well as mobile home units. It's not available for commercial properties. And the, in exchange for entering into this eviction relief agreement, the tenant is not obligated to pay their rent to the property owner. Instead, beginning in 2024, the renter will pay back the state the deferred rent. In exchange, the property owner receives tax credits, which can sort of be analogized to a gift certificate toward their future tax liabilities. These tax credits can either be used by the property owner beginning in 2024, or they could be sold on the market for immediate cash, kind of like a gift certificate could be. Again, this is fairly unique legislation. I'm not aware of any similar legislation, but it's an attempt really, again, to kind of balance the interests of property owners who would otherwise not receive anything, at least during the case of the emergency and the pandemic, as well as the tenants who are obviously facing, many tenants who are facing economic hardship right now. The bill doesn't necessarily tie the inability to pay rent to COVID as the governor's order and the city's emergency ordinance does, but instead it would be available to any tenant as long as they're a residential tenant. I've attached to the staff report the text of SB 1410, and I'm certainly available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Middleton, you want to go ahead?
I, my comment is very quick. I'm very supportive of this bill. One major difference, though, between what is in the bill with what our ordinance had is, under our ordinance, the renter needed to identify a COVID-related reason for the inability to pay rent. That does not exist in the state bill. It is simply an extension of, or a deferral of rent until the emergency is over. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just pulling it because I thought it's important for people to know. I think the state moving forward with this, and it has been moving forward through the process, and coming up with a way to protect people for a much longer time through a voluntary agreement, but where the state is going to give tax credits to the property owner, could really benefit a lot of people. And I think it's important for us to sign on, so. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Holstich, second by Councilmember Garner.
Mayor Protem Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Corse.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. So our next item is item 2A, considering, consideration of the CDVG 2025 Year Consolidated Plan, 2021 Annual Action Plan, the Citizen Participation Plan, and CDVG 2021 Budget Adoption and Authorizing Submission to the U.S. Partners Housing and Urban Development. Staff report, please.
Just, is a question. You'd mentioned previously that you may want to move up item 5A, which is a discussion on potential uses of the state CARES coronavirus release funds prior to the public hearing. If you did, we would just, could just move it up now and before the public hearing.
We can. I mean, my, the only thought was not to make any final decision on this, because we've done both, so we could do the needs of order, whichever you think would be better.
Well, it may not be necessary, since we did have the discussion with the budget subcommittee, so that may not be necessary to do that now.
Yeah. I don't think there's a need to do that now.
Right, thank you. Then we'll proceed.
If anyone else wants to, I would say move forward, as planned.
Thank you. Jay, please, thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council, this item is a continuation of the public hearing from June 25th and carried over to June 30th to tonight for the consolidated plan, annual action plan, and citizen participation plan. These documents are included in your staff report. The annual action plan is incorporated into the consolidated plan. And if you will recall, we've had discussions about allocating what is referred to as the regular CDVG funds, and that would be for fair housing at $43,000, senior repair program at $10,000, Demuth Park Community Center air conditioning at $130,000, and Demuth Park public restrooms at $175,000. And for administration, $89,000, for a total of $449.50. As you well know, the CARES Act was then approved, which included some additional funding specifically for addressing COVID. We refer to these as the CDVG CV funds. And after some discussions with the subcommittee and discussions with the council at previous meetings, where we left it was that these funds would be distributed to nonprofit organizations on a prorata basis, based on the amounts funded in the last grants and sponsorships. I could read these quickly, but they are in your staff reports. These include the Mizel Center for $55,000, Well in the Desert for $41,000, Fine Food Bank for $35,000, the Boys and Girls Club for $22,000, the LGBT Center of the Desert at $16,000, Desert AIDS Project for $13,000, Habitat for Humanity at $8,000, and Jewish Family Services for $8,000, Transgender Health and Wellness Center for $2,700, Hidden Harvest for $2,700, and the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition also for $2,700. The total amount is $211,328, adding in CDVG administration for the COVID aspect of $52,000. The total allocation for this group of funds would be $264,161, $264,161. And as I mentioned, these programs and activities are incorporated into the annual action plan as we currently have them drafted. The documents were made available for public review June 13th through June 18th. And approval of the consolidated plan, annual action plan, and citizen participation plan are before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir Mayor, if I could, I am on the board of directors for the LGBT Center, and as I understand it, I can participate in a holistic conversation on this subject, but cannot participate in any discussion specific to funding for the LGBT Center.
Yes, thank you. And I serve on the board of the Boys and Girls Club of Palm Springs, and I just want to confirm that the city attorney, we can discuss whether this funding should go to nonprofits or other entities, but when it comes to voting, we have to puse from the organization that we have a fiduciary-
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So any questions or comments? Councilman Woods?
Yeah, you know, last time during this, Jay, I had to kind of ask how many citizens, actually from our community, from the city of Palm Springs, use these services? And you said that there was an accounting of that and that that accounting was reviewed by staff. I would actually like to see that at some point in the future, because there is disparity in what different groups get, and I'd really like to see what happens in that in the future. But my question is, on something like the Boys and Girls Club, as I understand the Boys and Girls Club, they're closed down, so I'm not sure why we'd be funding dividers and repairs for social distancing and building ventilation and coolers when they're not operating, unless I'm misunderstanding.
So city attorney, can I answer that without participating? A question on it?
Yes, you can provide factual information.
Yeah, a couple of things. So, one, they're planning to reopen on August 5th when the school district reopens, and so working to set up that and working with the school district, because the school district looks like they're going to need locations for distance learning, because it'll be in school, it looks like, two days a week, and not, and you have to do it remotely two days a week, so their students can also be at the facility. They're also running programs now, but they're all virtual other than staff, but August 5th is the planned reopening date.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That really helps. Yeah, and I guess just in the future, I'd like to see the information, because as an example, the rental assistance that Habitat Humanity is giving, we have several other organizations giving rental assistance, and how much overlap do we have, and how much is Habitat Humanity actually helping our residents with that rental assistance?
Good, um-
That's probably more of a comment than it was a question, sorry.
Well, it's both, I think.
There are, as this evolves on a daily, weekly basis, more funds do become available for rental assistance, as we've seen. The county now has, is working with United Lift for a $33 million countywide resource, which is great. However, these organizations do have built-in tenants who may not be able to take advantage of the countywide resources, and so these small amounts would help. And granted, they probably won't go very far for each of these organizations, but this is how it, this would be consistent with the methodology used for determining these allocations on a prorata basis.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Councilmember Woods?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
So I just wanted to, on that train of thought, these are reimbursable expenses, though, right? So we have the ability to ensure that they go to Palm Springs residents and ensure that they're paid out to Palm Springs residents, and we can get the information about how many people it serves on the back end, right?
That's, that's correct. These will be conditions of the agreements we execute with these organizations. Mayor Protem, we will also be not allowing PPP, PPE as an expenditure, so we can control that. And the sub-receipients will be required to submit a report at the end of the year, providing who they've served, their demographic profiles, and what, how the program came out. This is a requirement for HUD.
Thanks. And I saw on the staff report, it says unspent funds would have to be returned, and if this is the direction the council's going for these, I would want to make sure that we really educate the providers about that, since they know it's hard for nonprofits to comply with all the different funding sources.
Any other questions or comments? I have one for staff, so, go ahead, Councilmember Garner.
I just wanted to put that up-
I just wanted to put that out there, that I have to recuse from the Boys and Girls Clubs as well because I do legal work for them. And I forgot to say that earlier.
Great, thank you. The only other question I have from staff is, are there other purposes that we should be discussing, you know, as an alternative? I know one thing we talked about, you know, with the Homeless Crisis Team, we are waiting for the Desert Healthcare District, on whether they're going to match other funding that we provide in this area for that team at their next meeting. Mayor Pro Tem, Hostage and I and staff had a meeting with them on that. So we don't have that information yet at this point. And so we can see what that has and then decide, you know, if we do use this funding as proposed here, I think we can look at that from other potential sources and decide if that's the best use of other money, unless people want to do that with this funding. My sense is that a lot of these nonprofits are really filling the gap right now for a lot of people. So.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's, that's correct. And in fact, as the city manager asked earlier, we will be discussing another source of funds later. And, you know, that all comes together to form the programs that the city is able to participate in and fund.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or motions?
I'll comment. We'd like to make a decision on this item tonight if we can, because it's come before us a number of times. We haven't been, you know, we haven't gotten there. We've had a lot of other discussions. And it's hard to know because it's hard for us to plan. We don't have a clear understanding of all the COVID relief that we'll get, if we'll get anything else. New money is coming in from different sources, like the state that we discussed later. So it is just like businesses right now and residents, it's hard for us as the city to plan because we don't know what our incoming money looks like. But I do, the mayor and I worked on the CDBG COVID public services. And I do support funding the nonprofit because I think that they are filling the gap. They desperately need these services. Rental relief is one of the major issues for residents. There's no guarantee that some of the county programs are going to Palm Springs residents. They're on a basis of applications and just not, it's not based on location. And so there's no clear, I don't have an understanding about how much of that money is going to Palm Springs residents. So I think it's really important that we provide this to nonprofits. I know, I think I was outvoted about the bathrooms and the general CDBG funds. I think that's the way that the council wants to go. But I do want to say, you know, we are at this point getting 1.2 million in different CDBG and COVID relief and the other funding. So if we did want to do a broader business, local business support plan or rental relief plan, we could do that. But it is hard with this specific funding. I think these nonprofits rely on us to fund them. We've done that for a long time. They provide basic social services that the city doesn't provide and the county doesn't provide enough of. So I'm really in support of, of funding the nonprofits with this funding right now.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just for, I, just for the public certification, the, I also support the nonprofits because I think they're very much needed, particularly at this point, and it is COVID related and this is COVID money. And I just wanted to kind of point out that this is a very special pot of money to address COVID issues. And each of these organizations that's proposed in the staff report are people, are organizations that are actually working with our residents that have COVID-related issues, be it financial issues, food issues, mental health issues, that each of these organizations or even medical issues are assisting our residents with. And I, and so I agree with the Mayor Pro Tem on funding the nonprofits.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I as well support the funding in the nonprofits with the exception of not commenting on anything to do with the LGBT accused center.
Thank you. So I think the best way to proceed and city attorney or city clerk, interrupt me if I am wrong, would be for Mayor Pro Tem Hostage to do the Boys and Girls Club first. We're allowed to be, Councilor Garner and I can be here. We don't need separate room facilities, it's the city rule, not state recusal. It's an extra step we take again on transparency, even though state allows elected officials to vote on nonprofits that they provide services to. And then we can vote on that. And then I can take, I can go back and we'll do the LGBT Center without Councilmember Middleton participating. And we can do the rest as a group.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to fund with this CDBG COVID money relief fund, the Boys and Girls Club in the amount of $22,352.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Hostage.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
I.
Councilmember Garner is recused and Mayor Corz is recused. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. The next one will be the LGBT Center.
So I'll make a motion to fund the LGBT Center of the Desert with the CDBG COVID relief fund in the amount of $16,764.
Second. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Hostage, second by Councilmember Woods.
Mayor Pro Tem Hostage.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Of course.
I just want to say that in the years, in the last seven years, the, the LGBT Center has really expanded its service base, and I give it kudos for doing that. Even to the point that it has its own building and visibility in the city of Palm Springs. And it's looking to even expand to the East Valley. So I just wanted to say I think it's a very worthwhile cause to be giving to.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Hostage.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Corz.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton is recused. Motion passes four to zero.
Great. And the last motion we need would be for the remaining organizations. Mayor Pro Tem Hostage. Misses out.
Are we doing, doing, to the city clerk and the city attorney, do we need one motion for the remaining items of the agenda item or just for, do you want to do the funding separately?
I believe you can do one motion for the rest.
There's a number of items. So do I need to read it or can I just make a motion to approve the remaining items laid out in the staff report?
You can move staff recommendation.
Thank you.
It might be worth noting the organizations on the rest of the public and the amounts without all the other items.
Sure. So I move staff recommendation, which includes the allocation of the CDBG funds to the Demuth Park Public Restrooms Project and the Demuth Park Community Center Air Conditioning Project and the COVID related funds for CDBG to the Mizel Senior Center in the amount of about $55,000, Well in the Desert for $41,000. All the amounts are laid out in the staff report, but I'm estimating. Fine Food Bank, about $35,000, Desert AIDS Project for about $13,000, Habitat for Humanity, about $8,000, Jewish Family Services of the Desert, about $8,000, the Transgender Health and Wellness Center for about $2,700, Hidden Harvest for Food Bank Services for about $2,700, and the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition for $2,700. And I'll just note for the public, the way that we did this is we took the amounts that we were contributing for these nonprofits to provide social services, and we just applied the same formula. So we're giving them about, I think, two-thirds of what they normally receive in other years. And that's because they rely on that funding to stay in operation in the city of Palm Springs. So I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Pro Tem Hostage, second by Councilmember Middleton.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Mayor, if we could also include the senior repair program for $10,000, Fair Housing Council for $43,688, program administration for $89,810 for the regular CDBG allocation and program administration in the amount of $52,832 for the CDBG CV administration. That would round off the entire allocation.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Hostage.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
I.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
I.
Mayor Corz.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 4A, please. Continued discussion and possible direction on the impacts in response to local movement being related to the novel coronavirus. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item was put on the agenda in the event that some of the orders or circumstances had changed and would give council an opportunity to review what those were and make any changes or modifications if necessary. City attorney has indicated that we don't formally have anything this evening. We did have a presentation earlier on, on the enforcement, so we took care of that item. The one question potentially I did have, though, we had had some discussion previously about reopening some city facilities and such as the computer, computer access at the, the library and the community centers, along with the swimming pool and others. We decided to, to, to hold back on that given the, the rise in, in COVID cases. However, you did want us to look at how we might be able to do a limited for computer use, access to computers. And so the Parks and Rec Director and the Library Director have come up basically with a plan for computer use at the library and the James O. Jesse Center. A smaller number of people obviously by appointment and very well controlled. And so anyway, we just want to let you know, we have that ready to go. We could start that as soon as next Monday. But we weren't sure council's feelings on proceeding, at least at that level even now.
Thank you. And the city manager, one of the things we talked on a week ago Tuesday was the pool. And given the spike in cases, and I think before we really discuss this, I'm happy to give a report that we got from our emergency manager on some updated data, which I think would be helpful for us and the public. I didn't want to ask, I think the concern on the pool was not the pool, but how the indoor areas, the changing rooms, locker rooms, showers, et cetera, would be managed. So is there a plan in place for that now? Because I think we'll want to discuss that as well.
I'm sorry, the question, Mayor, you faded out a little bit there.
I think the concern we had on the pool, the question, the concern we had on the pool, and I emailed this as well, was regarding the indoor areas given the new state rules, not the outdoor swimming.
Yes.
Given separation of laps and sort of the plan in place, at least for me.
Sure.
So I was curious if we have plans on how we're going to use the changing rooms and make sure the indoor areas were safe.
Actually, our Parks and Rec Director Cynthia is with us, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So the plan was to do by appointment only, 10 lanes at a time. And the locker room shower area would not be available for use. So we would be requesting that swimmers showed up dressed and then left dressed as well. Obviously, if they needed to use the restroom, they could. There is a shower outside on deck that would be available to be used, but that would be it.
Okay, great. Thank you. So let me share the numbers and then we can have questions and comments that we got from our emergency manager today. Riverside County is currently at double most of the state benchmarks for reopening. So it's not just a little out of compliance, it's a lot of out of compliance currently. Today, the county had the largest single day increase in positive cases by a wide margin. The 24-hour change was 1,377 new cases in Riverside County. The Coachella Valley had 310 of the increases. Palm Springs was 28 of the 310. The state is attributing the spike to the category all of the above, which doesn't tell us necessarily where we need to focus our efforts. They're not saying about any one specific reason. The state anticipates being another spike over the next few weeks due to the July 4th weekend. Hospitalization ICU usage rates are also high with some, five of the county's 17 hospitals implementing their serve plans now. The average timeline for hospitalization is two to four weeks after exposure. The county also stressed concerns with cooling centers during COVID and strongly recommended that all cooling centers have symptom screenings at the door. So anyway, that was the update, since you couldn't join us tonight, that I wanted to share. And so it's open up for discussion. I do think if we can safely open the two, the library and James O. Jesse for computer usage and with distancing and face coverings and making sure, you know, disinfecting the surfaces for folks. It's just really important for people who don't have computer access at home to be able to fly for jobs or get benefits, and it's by appointment only. And I think the swim center with the rules that we just heard makes sense, given we allow other actor activities. And most of what we've heard from the county, public health on calls and from the governor's action is, it is indoor that they're more concerned about than outdoor because the virus can linger inside without that air circulation. So that's just my initial thoughts, but I want to open this up. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. You're reading my mind. I support both of those. I think it, it's really important that those individuals who do not have computer access obtain it. And I don't know how many emails the rest of you have received regarding the swim center, but it is an extremely important and popular activity. And I believe our Parks and Recreation Directors laid out a good plan for how we can proceed. All of that said, as the mayor reported, the numbers are staggering in terms of new cases that are coming in. We made a commitment here in Palm Springs that we were going to try to get ahead of where others were when it came to imposing safety measures to make sure that our citizens are safe. And we need to keep aware of the fact that face covering, social distancing, every other responsible measure is something that is just simply incredibly important. And for those of us who are seniors and anyone else who has a compromised immune system, COVID is not something that is a light disease. The death rates as one ages or among those that are immune deficient are incredibly high and very dangerous. And it is appropriate that so many citizens in our city are frightened of this disease.
Any other questions or comments? So before we go to a motion, a couple of things to add, and really appreciate your comments, Councilmember Middleton. And, you know, the more, we came up with a doctor today on a meeting I was at, even the impacts on younger people now, just permanent issues with damage to lungs, with kidneys, with brain impacts. This could be a lifelong debilitating illness, and they just don't know enough about it. So people need to be safe. So people need to be safe. Uh, I do want to share a little bit, the COVID task, the COVID passports met on Tuesday. Uh, just really good in, input. Um, you know, the entire business community, all the organizations really want to see us doing what we're doing and really appreciate, uh, all the work staff is doing. So I really want to thank staff, which has taken a enormous amount of their time, uh, to do this. And, um, just, you know, the education effort that, uh, Mayor Protim Holstich mentioned, that chief leading up really, you know, help do the education necessary for people to take precautions. Because we could be living with this, you know, easily into early next year, and it could be through all of next year or longer, we don't know. And so, doing that work now, before we get into a real season, is very important. Uh, to keep people safe and make sure, we also don't have the public health impacts that will happen if we have another shutdown for three or four months. Councilmember Woods.
Yeah, I was just going to tell, um, we've done what several other cities have done, and we've, um, tried to open our public right of ways to, um, outdoor dining so our businesses would survive. And there's opportunities for residents to actually have some social, sort of social interaction with somebody else in a safe format. We are tweaking, um, or we will be tweaking, uh, some of those regulations, um, with that, um, to make it even better and safer for everyone that's out there. Um, but it has become, um, I don't know if we anticipated the demand would be as much as it is. And, um, it's quite, um, obvious that several businesses have taken advantage of this, uh, especially if you look at Palm Canyon. So I just wanted to get that out there, Mr. Mayor, as a comment, and thank you.
Great, and thank you for your work on that project. Anyone else?
Uh, Mayor, I, I did want to note that the, uh, Parks and Rec Director did want me to, uh, mention that on, and the swimming will be for residents only, uh, who will be making appointments.
Um, can I ask a question on that? Um, so once schools open, will students going to school in Palm Springs also be able to utilize the pool in the swim center?
Uh, we can, uh, block out a time so that our students can swim while they're attending program.
Okay. I mean, if we can do that, I think that'd be helpful. Mayor Protim Holstich.
Yeah, can we just talk a little bit about that more? So can you tell us the reasoning? I assume, I know that we did this initially with, uh, for tennis and pickleball, but can you just explain why staff's recommendation is to have it for residents only? Just thinking through, you know, we have a number of workers in the city of Palm Springs, or people who bring their kids to school, or daycare in Palm Springs. I just want to make sure we're thinking through everyone who might, um, want or need those services.
I actually wanted to seek direction from council to see how they wanted to, um, handle this. Because with pickleball and tennis, we, and, yeah, pickleball and tennis, we did only, you know, allow it for residents. The pool is a little bit different because it does bring in revenue. So how would you like to handle that so that I can prepare the team to move forward?
How is tennis and pickleball working? Because I know some of the public comment I got on that is that we should open it up. Um, and, you know, residents who live in Palm Springs might want to invite to go, my sister and my dad go swimming together every week, right? So things like that, people want to invite family members or something. So I'm just trying to, how is that working with tennis and pickleball?
Now, it's working out very well right now, restricting it to residents only. We don't have the large lines that we are accustomed to, um, which helps with, you know, decreasing any numbers, because when they are playing outside, they aren't wearing the masks, even though they do have them on their person. Um, at this time, I would say we should probably continue that model with that, because it is such a hot commodity, um, outside, and we don't have any type of enforcement. The pool obviously is a little bit different, because we do have it staffed, and we can definitely control that more. Um, so if you are open to letting residents come and swim by, by appointment only, we can definitely make that happen.
And what do you think about the capacity? If we have it just for residents, the usage versus the capacity or usage if we were to open it up more?
For the pool or pickleball?
The pool.
Um, so we have a 24-lane capacity pool, but obviously, we can't do all of that. So it would be 10 residents at a time for a 45-minute block, 15 minutes for staff to clean, and then, you know, we bring in another group. So, uh, we would start it at 7:00 AM, and the last session would come in at 2:00 PM. So we could get a definitely, you know, a decent number in daily. Um, we can try it for a two-week period and then come back and reassess if we need to. And we can keep track of, you know, how many residents are using it versus how many non-residents. Um, and obviously, our community will let us know if they feel they aren't getting enough preference in order to get into the pool versus a non-resident. We can track that data and bring it back, so we can update it if we need to.
And then the hours would stop at, did you say 3:00 PM? So how would that work with school, uh, students?
So the plan is to have the aquatic supervisor scheduled until 6:00 PM. So we would, she would be available. If we needed to alter the schedule a little bit, we would figure out how to do it. Um, we'll figure out how to accommodate, that's, that's what we do.
Thank you.
Um, just one follow-up on that quickly is, I, I assume we could do it the other way and start just with residents and see if we have excess capacity, which might be fairer since, um, you know, I think students that go to school here, you know, are an exception that should be treated like residents. But I do, I want to make sure our residents get first preference since their dollars and, um, their pool. Just my thoughts, but, you know, and then we'll be, we see it's not being used, very open to opening it up. Councilmember Middleton.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's along my thinking. I think we should, uh, uh, begin first two weeks with, uh, residents only, and if we have capacity, expand. Or some other model in which, uh, residents are given, uh, preference, uh, with the opportunity to be the first ones to make reservations or some other system. But it's, it's very common when, uh, with golf courses and, uh, uh, swim centers that are municipally owned, that, uh, the residents get the first crack at, uh, making a reservation.
Any other comments?
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me, I think, is giving preference to residents, but still having it available to non-residents if their space is available, and then reassess. So, yeah, I, I appreciate that, Cynthia, that you said you could track that information.
If I need to, just, just quickly, because obviously, I have a little bit of constraints with staffing levels, since I've lost two guards. If I need to, instead of doing a 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, are you okay with me moving it from 8:00 to 4:00 and then having swim for the kids from 3:00 to 4:00, so I can accommodate them?
Yes.
Um, oh, just in terms of the, the kids, but we're, school's not in session right now.
Sorry.
So the kids could go anytime, right now. So I, I, I'm just concerned right now, it's our hottest time, so the earlier that we can start swimming is probably better. I know that there's a lot of people who want to swim early. Um, and then if we can adjust the scheduling once we have confirmation of what exactly the school schedule will be and when the kids need it for sports, and if the sports teams are coming back, I don't know. I don't have that information. But I think for now, it might be helpful to start earlier. Uh, I don't think anyone's going to go swimming at 2:00.
No, they might at 6:00, though.
Yeah, but 6:00, 5:00 AM even, they'll go.
Um, we do have the, what, what we refer to as the baby pool, which is obviously not a lane-lined area. Um, we were talking about using that for family swim, so that we can have it basically on the out, on the block time that lap swim was happening as well. And we would limit it to a family of five, so that we can make sure we can accommodate families who want to get in and use it. So we can definitely do the children's swim during that time, obviously. And then, since school's not in session right now, we'll stick to the 7:00 AM to 3:00, 3:00 PM. Um, and just use that area so we can have families come in and use it.
That sounds great.
And I'd rather, instead of giving specific direction, I think you all are the experts about the, having flexibility about what the demand is and when, and I'd rather not tie your hands and just have you do that. Um, and then we can report back in two weeks and see how it's going, and if we need to make any changes.
Okay, and then I just want to clarify with our city attorney. Sports practices haven't been cleared yet, because after this meeting, I'm sure I'm going to get many calls for swim team practices.
That is correct. The question's been posed throughout Riverside County, and the county's made it clear that youth sports activities, group, group sports activities are not currently allowed.
Okay.
Uh, go ahead, Mayor Protim Holstich.
Sorry, I just have one more question I forgot to ask. Are we requiring proof of residency, or how does that work?
We always require proof of residency, um, when it comes to using any of the facilities, so that we can make sure that they get the resident fee rates. Um, so currently, we use, you know, obviously, um, utility bills, a lease agreement. Um, a lot of our swimmers are already in the system. So they will, we will be ending the, the punch card system that we have, and we'll be going to scan cards. So when they come in, they'll just scan, and they'll be able to move in forward. So we are getting very technology-friendly in our, in our department, so.
Great. Um, so city manager, do you need anything more, other than this, is this enough direction?
Yeah, yes, uh, th- thank you, we'll move forward.
Great, thank you. The next item is 4B, discussion regarding a draft ordinance on reusable food service or in plastic wa- waste reduction. Before we do the staff report, it's in a little over two hours. Do people want to take a 10-minute bio break? Yes. So it's 8:07, why don't we plan on being back by 8:20? Thank you, everyone. So continuing where we left off, which is 4B, discussion regarding a draft ordinance on reusable food service ware and plastic waste reduction. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem and council members. Before I start talking about the disposable foodware, I would like to just mention another plastic-related topic that has had some questions recently, and that is related to reusable or single-use plastic bags in grocery stores. So I mentioned a couple of weeks ago at our meeting that we are lifting our suspension of the enforcement of our plastic bag ban, and we'll start doing that in August to give folks a chance to ramp up in terms of their purchase of alternatives. Also, I just wanted to mention that the, all of the major grocery stores, except for Jensen's, will allow people to bring their reusable bags in and bag it themselves. So people should feel free to do that. You may have to keep the bag in your cart, which actually makes it easier for you to take it out, but that is possible, and so people should feel free to do that. The other thing is that we've had some questions about whether or not there's a shortage of recycled paper bags, because there were lots of predictions about that. But I did contact each of the major stores, and none of them said that they were experiencing that. One store had run out, but they were getting a new shipment in, I think, yesterday. So that does not appear to be a problem anyway, but in the letter that I send out to them, I will just mention that if they do experience a shortage, or if we do experience a shortage, that they should just notify us and we will note that, and they can use substitutes until they get the new shipment in. So that's where we are with that. All right. So let's move on to reusable food service ware and plastic waste reduction. A lot of folks ask kind of why we're talking about this now, and this quote from a recent editorial by the LA Times sums it up pretty well. Even as we grapple with the formidable short-term crises facing us, we must keep in mind the long-term threats to our health and our environment. Plastics is one of those threats. It continues to be a pervasive problem, and I would just draw your attention to a couple of new facts. One is that they have actually found microplastics in pristine mountaintop areas where the only way that it can get there is through the air, so now they are thinking that they are airborne. And then the other thing is certainly with the advent of COVID, we certainly do have a lot more plastic waste from PPE and from disposable foodware, so we're facing another challenge on that front as well. So this work emerged, as was mentioned earlier this evening, by one of the commenters in a report and recommendations by the Sustainability Commission, to have an ordinance to limit or eliminate plastic foodware and certain types of plastic foodware. And so their initial recommendation included prohibitions on polystyrene foam, foodware such as cups, straws, plates, and containers, and applying it broadly to various food service providers, and encouraging use of recyclable and compostable foodware. And so last June, we met and talked through some of the things that we were seeing, and at that time, we received direction from you to move forward with developing an ordinance. And some of the things that we were considering and looking at, at the time of developing the draft ordinance, were that a lot of cities in California were already doing this. So there were hundreds of examples out there, from very basic examples of ordinances to much more progressive ordinances, and we enlisted a consultant who helped with some of those more progressive ordinances to help us think through these things and see how they were doing. We had a situation, and we still have a situation, where the definitions of recyclable, compostable, and reusable are changing, and there are state activities underway right now to help improve those definitions so that there's more clarity. But certainly right now, things that are labeled as recyclable and compostable are often not, and they are often subject to food contamination, which makes them unrecyclable. And in the world of composting, we're certainly facing a lot of new organics requirements that are coming down the road, and so figuring out what to do with compostable foodware is one of the challenges that we have because they are not necessarily accepted at all composting facilities. So we also did some outreach to businesses as part of this development process. We had a couple of public input sessions, although the participation there was limited. We had really great discussions and they had really good insightful questions for us, including, why would you make us go to compostables if you can't compost them? So we thought hard about that in the development of the draft. We also conducted a survey of businesses to understand current practices, to see where people were with these various things, and so the results, the detailed results of that are in the attachment that you've got there. And in general, when we talk to people, everybody wanted to do the right thing, and lots of people were concerned about cost, though, with the understanding that some of those substitutes might be more expensive. We also conducted a pilot with a cultural center to help us understand what businesses go through when they try to make this transition. So we worked with them on finding some substitutes to their polystyrene foodware and think about how they could promote more reusables. And they were actually on the verge of doing a really nice reusable cup and container campaign that got interrupted by COVID, unfortunately. And we also reached out to some retailers directly on this idea of potentially having a broad polystyrene ban, which is something that the commission was in support of, and so we didn't get a lot of feedback from them, but I did visit with the managers of a couple of stores that sell a lot of that. So we did get some feedback from them. So as a result, we ended up with a fairly progressive model, which, based on our meeting back in June, where I believe somebody asked us to be bold, we felt like we should embrace some of the more progressive ideas that were out there. And among those are the things that are listed here on this slide, and I'll just point out a few. What is requiring reusable foodware for all onsite dining? And this is something that has been tested, and there's lots of case studies about, and in all of the situations that it's been applied and studied, people are saving money. So businesses are saving money by making this change. So we think that this is an advantage for businesses and an idea that a lot of businesses have actually already embraced, so it's really just reaching out to those that have not. Also requiring restaurants and food service businesses to allow customers to use reusable foodware per health guidelines. We wanted to make sure that we included that. We did talk about a ban on all polystyrene, including foam and rigid polystyrene. That would be a pretty big deal, including not just the foam containers that you see for foodware, but the stuff that you buy at the store as well. That's based largely on the fact that styrene itself is a listed carcinogen on Proposition 65 in the state of California, and actually, those problems are enhanced when that material is heated, which typically happens when you put hot food in it. We also had a requirement in there for condiments to be in bulk dispensers or paper packaging. Required accessories such as straws, stirs, and toothpicks to be non-plastic, and straws only on request in all onsite dining and drinking situations. All takeout foodware and foodware accessories should, I'm sorry, all takeout foodware accessories should be available only on request. Not using plastic bags for takeout food. This is an exception in our current plastic bag ban, and so that's something that we would want to eliminate under the draft ordinance. And then having a disposable cup and container charge is something that some of the more progressive cities are doing, and it's aligned with the thinking around charging for disposable bags. So having that incentive for people to use their reusables through a small charge added to a cup or a container. So those are the things that we had considered and had included in a draft ordinance. We did not include the full draft ordinance for you today. We wanted to focus more on the features and a discussion of the kinds of things that you may or may not want in it, as opposed to bog you down with the legal language of the ordinance itself. So that was before COVID. We had planned to present this to you in the February-March timeframe, and of course, that's when COVID hit. And so the kinds of things that we saw when that happened were things like plummeting prices of virgin plastic. At the same time as COVID hit, the price of oil just fell through the floor, and so that meant virgin plastic was beyond cheap, and so that did two things. One is it made prices for plastic lower, and it also decreased the demand for recycled plastic. So that created two problems for us. Of course, dining experiences were transforming. There was a big shift to takeout, and so of course, a lot more use of takeout foodware. State guidance allowed for the use of more disposable foodware in onsite dining, and although it was caveated with if you can't disinfect your reusable foodware, but a lot of restaurants embrace this. And of course, public still has concerns about contact spread of the virus. CDC continues to say that this is not a very significant source of spread, but of course, we don't know what we don't know. But it doesn't seem to be transmitted in this way as we thought it had, might be at the beginning. So that basically put all reusable foodware programs on hold. So a lot of the programs that we were looking at, such as Berkeley and Fairfax and other places, were basically just put on hold for the time being. So in light of all of those things, we, I included in the staff report some, a more limited set of options for you guys to think about if you wanted to do something now or in the near future. I will caveat this to say that this is based on, this is an analytical recommendation and not based on coordination and collaboration with the full Sustainability Commission, which helped to develop the other parameters that I mentioned to you before. And so I just wanted to highlight that. So the more limited sort of COVID-responsive options that we highlighted for you were, one was to ban use of plastic straws. A lot of organizations are moving in this direction, and it will just prompt action by those that are not. In fact, I was on the phone with the new regional coordinator for, regional manager for Starbucks today, and she was saying that they plan to be straw-free by January of next year, switching to all, I call them sippy cups, but they're the drinking cup tops. The other one is require foodware accessories be provided only on demand for takeout food. Again, this is something that people say that they do but actually don't do in real life. When we surveyed restaurants, we did find some people that responded that said that they only do this on demand, and then when we actually went there to actually order from them, we automatically got it in our bag. So this is something that I think people are thinking about and moving towards, but not everybody is on board with this yet. And this is another thing that will save companies money because they won't have to order as much of these materials that probably a large portion of people don't even need. Then the last thing is require reusable foodware for onsite consumption for new businesses to build this into their operations, so they wouldn't have to add a dishwasher later, or they wouldn't have to somehow change their practices. They could integrate it from the beginning. This also opens the door for us, I believe, to encourage this among current businesses and perhaps encourage pilots by current businesses, so that more people adopt this practice. So this is something else that we included as a potential for your consideration that we believe is fairly COVID-responsive as well. And I did want to mention, there are a couple of things in there that we did include as perhaps future, future ideas that you could include in an ordinance. Things like the limits on polystyrene, the limits on single-use plastic bags for takeout food and things like that. We could certainly continue to monitor these things. The polystyrene one in particular is a problem. We know that. But we also know that people that are using polystyrene, especially restaurants that are currently fiscally strapped right now, those do involve more money for alternatives. Polystyrene is almost free, and so it's hard to compete with that in terms of the cost. And so we would want to make sure that we are past some of this initial COVID stuff, so that we can, so that people will have a little more wherewithal to make that switch, which is why it's included in a little bit later phase. So we are interested in getting your feedback today on the different features that we presented, both maybe the more limited options that we presented, or anything that you may have resonated with you on the other options that would have been part of a more comprehensive ordinance. So with that, I'm happy to take questions and get your comments and feedback.
So thank you, Patrick. Thank you for the really terrific staff report and all the work in the Sustainability Commission. I know they've been working on this for a long time, and really appreciate all their leadership and work getting this forward. So comments, questions? Mayor Protem Holstich.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick, for really, I agree, a really excellent and thorough staff report. I was just blown away by the quality of the work in this. And so thank you. And I know all of, some of that is also the amazing work by the Sustainability Commission and their Waste Reduction Subcommittee. They've been working on this for, since 2018, or maybe a little bit earlier. They've been working on this for a long time. So we actually were working on it before the state moved forward to ban straws. We wanted to be first and get ahead of the state, because we're good at that in Palm Springs. And then the state changed, and then we had to kind of go back. And I'm really glad we spent the time to make a comprehensive ordinance, because, you know, it's not just straws. A lot of the bigger issues are microplastics in our environment, in our bodies, and styrofoam as well. So I am really interested to see what the rest of the council feels and has opinions about some of these options. But I just wanted to give the kind of background, because I've been working on this for, it feels like forever. We had our fourth grade students from Desert Learning Academy come almost two years ago, or in 2018, and ask us to save the turtles and save the planet. And I promised them that if they come to city council and ask us to take action or to consider an item, that we will hear them, because we work for them. So I wanted to make sure, and I support this coming forward now, and I know it's a difficult time for businesses, it's a difficult time for everyone. But I did want this to come forward, because the plastic pollution problem is getting much worse as people are moving to takeout. And there's ways that we could take bold action that can be business-friendly and support businesses, as well as protect our health and our environment. So I don't know how we want to go through this. There's a lot of different options here. But I wanted to say that I support the full scope that was approved by the Sustainability Commission. And I'm hopeful that we can do that in a phased approach. So if there are any items, and, you know, we've done a lot of business outreach for the last almost two years on this. I've gone to Main Street and Palm Springs Resorts, and I've done a lot. We've sat down with business owners. I sat down with Cisco and talked about group purchasing and what local businesses could actually purchase. And we've had a lot of this conversation and done a lot of the outreach. So obviously, it's different now for businesses, and we need to continue to do that work with our stakeholders. But I do think we should move forward on the full scope in a possibly phased approach for some of the items that might be difficult now. And then do that outreach, and then when we have a full, you know, bring a full ordinance, we can use that feedback to either decide what should be phased, what might not be included. But I think to preemptively exclude items that, you know, affect our health and our environment and our city, you know, I don't think we should do that at this point, because we really haven't received any of that feedback. So I really support including the styrofoam limit, because it's so harmful to our environment, and that's what we find in city parks and in our washes and things like that. So I think that the option two is too limited, and I would like to see more included. But really support the Sustainability Commission and all of their work on this and all of their analysis, because I think it sounds.
Thank you. Councilor Darnett.
I think there's obviously a lot here, and I was also really impressed with how much information we received. The big thing that really stood out to me was the education component. So as I was reading through this, I was thinking, oh, I didn't know that. I didn't know this. I didn't know this other thing. And so I think that's going to be something that a lot of our community is going to be thinking, you know, why are we doing these things? Why are we taking action? And we're going to have to make sure that we are teaching people about it. And I think the schools are a great place to do that. And we've seen this done before in our country with recycling, for instance. That was a huge push that was aimed at children. And that changed a lot of things, the same with littering. So I think that this is a good opportunity to work with the school district and our teachers and figuring out ways to incorporate this into learning, and in other ways, too, even without the school district. The one thing that I noticed on here, too, is the pool noodles. And I thought, no, you can't take away the pool noodles, but they're, you know, part of the problem, right? This is the product that they're made from is part of the problem, and we should be thinking about this stuff and figuring out what are alternatives and really pushing for people to be making those alternatives if they don't already exist. So I really, really like this, and I agree that we should take a bolder approach. I am concerned for small businesses and how they're going to be able to move forward. I agree that we just need to make sure we're doing that outreach with them and figuring out those ways to do it, like the bulk, you know, group, a group purchase instead of just one business on their own. So we'd be really interested to get those, that input the next time we discuss this. I also agree with the phased-in approach. I think this is a lot to do all at once, and so being able to slowly get the buy-in is helpful. I also appreciated just the level of detail. I know, Patrick, I was reading the thing about the plastic straws, and then I thought, well, you know, I've been hearing a lot from disability activists that sometimes the plastic straw is the only option, and then there it was three seconds, three sentences later. So I really appreciate that level of detail of really thinking about all of those different considerations. So I really like this, and I think it's a good option.
Councilor Middleton.
Thank you. And I want to add my congratulations and thanks to the staff for an outstanding report, the Sustainability Commission for their work on this over the years, but also Mayor Protem Holstich for her leadership on this issue. She's brought both passion and intelligence to this debate. So I want us to move forward with a bold approach to it. I have a couple of quibbles with a couple of the requirements, but the most important thing that I do think we need to do is recognize that we are still in an emergency, that food is being distributed during this emergency in a different fashion, and provide a phased-in approach that recognizes that where restaurants are having to provide foods distribution in ways that are not their norm, that we allow for that during this time, that it's an emergency, and during the time it's necessary because of the emergency. Not as an opportunity to simply delay implementing plans that should be implemented.
I'm in the agreement with the Mayor Protem. I think a comprehensive plan is the best way to go at this point. If we need to phase it in, fine, but the more that we serve food that actually has toxins in it and is bad for people, the shorter of a timeframe we can get rid of that type of product to help our residents, the better I think it is, because the residents don't have a choice many times on what they get. The restaurants and us in setting our regulations help them get, have choices that are much better for them. So I believe in the full comprehensive approach on it. And I think a lot of corporations, like Patrick said, Starbucks, a lot of people are already gearing up for all of this. There's enough of a social movement to want to reduce our reliance on plastic. And we have plastic beyond belief. When you come home from the grocery store, the amount of plastic that each individual has on stuff that's wrapped is beyond belief. And this stuff does not biodegrade, and it will never biodegrade in our lifetime. It is polluting our bodies, it's polluting the oceans, and I think it's incumbent upon us to really take a comprehensive approach. And if we have to phase it in, fine, if that makes it better. But I do applaud the Sustainability Commission and the previous council and everyone else that's worked on this, to have gone out to the businesses to get their input into it, because it is a transition that you don't want to just poist upon somebody. You want, actually, you want partnership to get to a better place and a better world. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I appreciate all the comments on this, and when you think about the harms involved, you know, whether people are more concerned with the environment or more concerned with their own health, it's both. And, you know, we sat in many, when we did have dinner during closed session before these meetings, and we really didn't want food that was coming in a container that was a material that could cause cancer, that how food was in, all right? No one wants to eat that if they know. So I do want to just share, because I did hear from some of the business organizations as liaison, that, you know, they didn't know this was coming in this, so they didn't have a lot of time to have a board meeting to discuss it. So, you know, as we move forward, making sure, you know, when we have a draft ordinance, that we can get it out to them a month ahead, because some of them meet once a month. And, you know, we can get someone from Sustainability and Mayor Protem Holstich and Patrick to meet with them. I think one of the things they really want to know is going to be the cost of each thing and the impact it's going to have on them and their consumers, especially, you know, how that's going to impact customers as well. So I think that needs to be part of this. I know there was some information on that in the report, but I think they really want a lot more on that. And in some of the meetings, Mayor Protem Holstich and I had been working on this together, and I appreciate her continuing those efforts on her own since then. But, you know, there was a few restaurants, who, Los Consoles Trazas especially, was trying out different things to see, okay, what would work with the soup? What would work with salsa that didn't spill? What would keep refried beans from, you know, what would work and what the costs were? So I think really getting that information in the report to share with other, you know, restaurants is going to be important. The one thing, and I think we should bring it all back, I would like to see us bring the things that aren't costly back now, because to do anything significant that's going to raise costs in the middle of, you know, a situation where restaurants are at reduced capacity and may only be able to takeout, can't serve indoors at all, you know, I'd be really hesitant to do, but doesn't mean we can't move things into place to phase in, as people discussed. I always worry about, you know, disposable cup charges and the impact it has on lower-income residents, that, you know, it's a two-edged sword there, but there are, but there's a benefit to doing it, and obviously, it helps the restaurant cover the cost of those. But I think, you know, the things that, Patrick, you recommended that we do now, I think we should do, you know, in two weeks if we can. You know, the things that don't have the cost, the first phase, if we could do it right now, it's going to save restaurants money. You know, I just ordered two really nice sets of bamboo, because my last reusable silverware and I was like, what is this? Because these are nicer. So there are a lot of inexpensive, really inexpensive options that are reusable and washable that people can have and take with them. And part of that is also going to be the education to let people know those are available. You know, if we let people know about the dangers of getting takeout and delivery with polystyrofoam and encourage them to ask places if that's what they're getting, then people may pick and choose places that don't in the meantime. And so I think we can do some education during the phased-in approach as well. That's what I have on that.
Yeah, plus, who wants soggy french fries? They're always soggy if it's in styrofoam.
And if you're going to have french fries, they have to be really good. I'm with you. That's a treat. Very good.
Now I want french fries. Thank you. I agree, and I do think, and when I said phased approach, I think that we should do what we can now that doesn't have a significant impact on businesses, because, I mean, I feel guilty about how many tons of plastic we've wasted since we first considered this. And thank you to the mayor, because I know you, I didn't give you a shout out, but you really have led on this as well and worked with the businesses. So I don't know if we want to talk more in depth, but I would make a motion to send back Option 1 to support the full scope as approved by the Sustainability Commission with direction. So send it back to staff and the Sustainability Commission or their working group to analyze what can be done now with, you know, insignificant sort of cost to businesses immediately, and then what should be phased appro, what should be phased in and when, and then bring back that full ordinance to city council. And I'm happy to work, or if the mayor would as well, with business organizations and residents to do outreach and education on an ordinance ahead of time, so that we do all that outreach and education. Because I think we had also talked about incentives and the city using joint, larger buying power and sort of some other solutions that we might be able to include in here. But overall, I think what we should support the full scope and give direction to that effect, and then have it come back with that outreach and stakeholder input.
I can support that.
Thank you. Just a friendly maybe amendment to that. But if we could have the draft ordinance of the full scope a month out, a month before, because organizations typically only meet monthly, at least a month before, so there's plenty of time for them to review it, get it out to their membership, have a meeting that, you know, we could be at to answer questions, I think would be really helpful.
Yeah, I would accept that friendly amendment. For a little bit discussion, if we can. Look, I agree with the mayor about the disposable cup charge for now. I think that's something I might want to see phased in, if we do consider it. The onsite condiments in bulk seems like it might need to be delayed, but we'll get assessment about COVID on that and what's possible. And then the reusable foodware for onsite dining, I'm interested in stakeholder input, how that would work with COVID, though it's my personal pet peeve as a customer to go to a location and get, you know, nonreusable. But I know we're in a different environment. So those were the only that I had sort of identified that we might need further analysis on, but we'll get input from stakeholders. I don't know if anyone else has any items on that before we move on.
No, I mean, I don't, you know, it's fine to have, you know, obviously, input on all of that. of them, but I think sort of the ones that Patrick went through that don't have a cost and actually save money, if it's okay with the Sustainability Commission, I think we should bring back first while the ordinance is being drafted because those can go into effect as soon as possible. And it sort of is a start, right? And it moves us in the right direction.
Councilmember Middleton?
I have two that I'd like to bring up, to have reviewed. One is the recommendation that there be a washing station at locations, it's on page 11 of the report, for individuals to be able to wash their personal cups and containers, which you're creating is a public washing station within many retail establishments. One, I don't, I have some questions about how pragmatic that is going to be, but two, in an environment such as COVID, sharing a washing station, I think is something that many people would be reluctant to do. The second is, I understand the reasoning for making, when it's takeout food, the forks and knives, something that's on demand, but I know from personal experience when I'm traveling, particularly on business, I eat a lot of takeout food and one of the worst experiences is to walk, to have been in meetings a long day, walk three or four blocks to get the takeout food, get back to your hotel room, and there's nothing in the bag to eat with. So it's going to take some education to get to that point where we really can trust that folks are going to always remember to ask for it on demand. So I would like to see that one at least looked at.
I think not having ketchup in the bag for your french fries is right up there.
You know, I was going to say that my pet peeve, I've thrown away so many disposables during this crisis, working and living at home and have, getting so much takeout from our local businesses. However, I have gotten to a hotel room for city business and ordered noodles and not had anything to eat them with. So, you know, I understand it's an education piece, but I'm concerned about how many of those we are wasting as Palm Springs residents at least.
So, go ahead.
So can I just make a comment?
I think you're good to raise.
I was just going to make a comment about a couple of those things that you guys mentioned in particular. One of the things that I started out with in the first, the meetings that we had early on about this was that this is going to be a culture change, not just for businesses, but for residents as well. So it's really, as you were saying, a combined education approach. It's not just businesses that are going to have to change, it's people that are going to have to change too. And so we recognize that and we recognize the significance of that and so I just wanted to mention that and it is truly reflected in some of the stuff that you've said already.
I think on that, it is, it's going to take some time and I think we can do things like signage, which is really helpful. I know with the plastic straws, that was, I've seen a lot of businesses that specifically have signs at the counter, so I think things like that we can figure it out. But what I'm saying is I think it's good for us to be thinking about those things. What's going to be hard? What would be hard for us? What would be hard for someone else to remember so that we can think about those options to make it easier for people?
Yeah. And, uh, so Mayor Pro Tem, I had a question on, as we're talking about, the disposable utensils for takeout. Upon request, I would assume that means, in reality, you ask for it or most restaurants will ask you if you want it. And I think that will avoid a lot of it because restaurants don't want people calling them. So I presume they're still going to ask people if they want it. And if that's allowed, initially allowed and not banned anyway, which I don't think it is here, that might make that more workable. But I agree with you, it's, you know, you even can call and say you don't want it when you do your orders, as I've done here, and it shows up anyway. And, you know, there's no use for it other than saving it. And, but I do think if there's something we can do there and restaurants can ask people if they want it, but, you know, we can check in if the restaurants are getting a lot of complaints on that and how we do the education on that, I think.
So Mayor, one of the interesting things that's actually happened as a result of COVID is that a lot of restaurants have moved a lot of that to back of house and so they're starting to get used to this idea of asking people if they want it. And in fact, we were at coffee last weekend and the woman behind the counter, somebody asked her for a straw or something like that and she's like, oh yeah, that's right, I've got to, I've got to ask you if you want one now. So, so anyway, so there is some culture change that's actually happening automatically with the result of COVID, so.
Great. Thank you. Yeah.
One question on, wait. I was just going to say, I was going to make a couple of comments. One was just in response to Councilmember Middleton, as the good Eagle Scout that I am, I travel with a night food and spoon that all go together and if I don't, I call the front desk and ask for a porridge. But I think why this is important to me is, one, we're a progressive city and other progressive cities have done the same thing. And two, it starts to put pressure on manufacturers so that polystyrene isn't so inexpensive and that other things start to become, start to be made so that they are actually biodegradable. And I think as we pass this and more people become conscious of it, it will put pressure on our manufacturers and I think that's important, even though we have no manufacturers here that I know of producing this stuff, it will put pressure on them to start changing their ways.
For Garner.
I agree and I think that this is another component of this is this larger discussion about how we recycle things and what's compostable versus biodegradable and what our capacity is, which in the staff report mentioned, you know, what, working with Palm Springs Disposal to understand what we can do and what we can't. But this is also a really good opportunity when we're talking about bringing economic diversity to our city and to our region. One thing that I would love to have here is a recycling center that's actually at the front of this environmental work and making sure that we're actually supporting businesses like that to come to the valley where we've got some space and could be doing really good environmental things. But I'd like for us to consider what kind of options there are for businesses like that and offering incentives for them to come. I mean, these are likely, you know, new developing industry, but I think it would be really useful to have something like that here.
Mr. Tim.
I totally agree with Councilmember Woods and Garner that we're essentially helping with demand and that's what consumers demand already. I mean, I moved here eight years ago from the Bay Area and I was shocked and appalled to get my food in styrofoam because I knew, we knew then, we knew a long time ago that it was unhealthy to have hot food and beverages in styrofoam. So I just urge us to take bold action because we're behind the curve of 100 cities in California who've already taken action and part of that is because we've been working so hard on having a really good ordinance versus just doing something to look like we're doing something instead of actually solving some of these problems. So I'm glad that we're doing it in this way. So was it the, Mayor, was your proposal to bring back sort of immediately the option two with a plan to bring forward with more stakeholder input, the items in option one, or should we do that together? I don't know if staff has a recommendation on that too. My fear is I don't want to do something just on option two without having a guarantee that it won't take two more years to get to option one, at least to legislate an approach and a timeline. So I don't know, Mayor, if you want to explain that and then maybe staff has a recommendation.
Yeah, what I, I think it's sort of, I think it's doing both, but I think some of those are not going to be controversial and, you know, are not costing businesses anymore or creating any more hardship on them at all. So I thought those won't need that input. I mean, I can do the outreach on those couple of things to the organizations on liaison for before our next meeting and we might be able to do that our next meeting. So I thought we can make progress, but as soon as the ordinance is ready, you know, make sure we have a month to do, set up those meetings with all the groups on the things that are going to be more significant changes, to get their input and us and more information on the cost of those. But yeah, I'd love to hear from Patrick on that as well.
All right. So I think what I'm hearing is that you would like something more immediate so that it can go through and then we'll work on a more comprehensive approach that would be integrated into that, that kind of plastics light version and down the road, so with more input. So I, that makes sense to me and it's certainly something we could turn around pretty quickly given we've already got it written, we'll just pull those sections out and put those forward.
How long do you think you need to do the whole thing so we, so we can have some schedule?
Yeah. So that's an interesting question. So I could turn around the few items that you've got here, probably even at the next meeting if you wanted them. And then for the other stuff, I would really like to do fairly robust engagement on it. I mean, we were in a sort of a catch 22 situation up to now, not understanding kind of how you wanted to go with this. So now that we have a little more direction, I think that outreach will be a lot easier and can go forward in a more expedited way. But I would, you know, we're in such a weird time, it's hard to get people to talk about anything else, quite honestly. So I don't know if by the end of the year would be too long. I mean, I'm feeling like everything is changing so fast right now that people are having a hardest, hard time keeping up over the next probably couple of months. So I would think that reaching out to folks in the, probably the September, October timeframe when maybe more, more of the businesses are back and maybe, maybe more normal operations, that might be helpful too. So maybe doing more of that outreach systematically in September, October and then coming up back with the full ordinance in November, December timeframe. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I'm completely understanding. I'm all for option number one if, if, and I'm all for getting rid of polystyrene as quickly as we could possibly do it. So I would rather have the ordinance say at a certain date the transition occurs and that, and if that date is, let's say, January 1st, 2021 or March 1st, 2021, it gives enough time to do the outreach between now and whatever that future date is, where we're showing a direction that we definitely want to have food containers that are not toxic to be delivered to people. And I would rather see it more defined time-wise and then it allows restaurants to get rid of their inventory, to ramp up with new inventory and have the outreach that I think other people are talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I slightly disagree if I understand what you're saying. I think there needs to be some more outreach before the ordinance gets voted on because, you know, there was initial outreach, but there were a lot of questions on costs and practicality that people had that need to get them so they have the ability to weigh in with us before we vote on the ordinance. And Patrick's point, you know, twelve of our hotels won't be open probably till September or October, you know, not all the restaurants are open yet. So that was my thought of, there are things we might be able to do in the next two weeks. Let's get the draft of the ordinance as soon as we can and then start doing the outreach.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking. You could, you could, we could draft the ordinance and have that and take that with us in September, October and do the outreach with the ordinance and then, then get the feedback and then finalize it.
My concern, and I could be okay with that, but the concern is, anything that's not polystyrene is going to be more expensive. I mean, that was just told to us in the staff report. So I, cost, this is about public health and if you pay 10 cents for it or you pay zero for it, you know, you, the 10 cents is then reflected in your overall cost for that piece of food and giving them time to do that. But just because a container is going to cost you a little bit more isn't for me a reason to not ban polystyrene, which I think is horribly dangerous to have out there.
Would it work to ban polystyrene immediately and then follow the plan that the mayor is recommending where we have the draft ordinance and we give Patrick time in September and October to explain it to the community, to hold engagement sessions? I don't think the actual implementation date would be very different in that fashion. And at least gives individuals the opportunity to come back and say, to register whatever complaints they want to have, whatever information we want to give before we actually implement the ordinance. But I don't think there's anyone on this council that's going to defend serving food in polystyrene.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern, we need to ban food in polystyrene. I mean, I thought that from, before we started this. My only concern is to do it without the businesses having an opportunity to weigh in with us, right? So they know we're doing it. So we have to give at least some time on that. As you pointed out, Councilmember Wood, you know, they have inventories, so what's the cost to them to, so if we're going to ban it in two weeks, I think that would take a lot of them right now who are struggling and don't have alternatives and are, you know, not making money, just breaking even at best, I think might be a little hard. So I just want to make sure we have some time to give them input on that. That's all. Your person, Hostage.
Thank you. Yeah, it's hard. It's like a chicken and the egg kind of thing in doing community outreach because sometimes we get stuck in outreach hell because people aren't paying attention until it comes to council and it's just hard sometimes to get even, you know, the media or the public to learn and talk about it until it comes to council. So sometimes I feel that, you know, it's that tension between making sure we do enough outreach, but making things, making sure things come forward. I mean, I do agree that there are items, prohibiting plastic straws, limiting disposable foodware to on-demand or on-request only, the require reusable foodware onsite for consumption. I would like to see prohibiting the use of polystyrene food now by vendors and single-use plastic bags now, that would be my option two. I wonder if we want to, instead of having a two-week timeframe, have a, you know, set timeframe, a set date in a month or two months or however long it will take us to do some of that outreach. I know the mayor and I are on calls every week or every other week with business stakeholders, so I think that we can do that and I understand that, you know, people are phasing in their businesses and that's difficult and we want to make sure we pick deadlines. It's not that we're going to start it in two weeks, but that we pick a good timeline that will work for folks. But it also is for residents too who are like me, eating food in styrofoam, you know, and throwing away disposables that we don't pay for, you know. The hard thing with this whole movement is that consumers and businesses, we're not paying upfront and we're paying on the backend with the environment and our health. So that's the thing is it's cheaper now, but I think the staff report laid out that a lot of these items are actually cost savings to businesses and businesses might not understand that or have the time to do all that research that our staff has done. So maybe we just want to pick a shorter timeframe to bring back those items that give enough time for outreach. Is that where we are or would someone?
No, I think that makes sense. You know, given we have one more meeting this month and none scheduled in August, if we do it at one of our September meetings, some of those are dark in September and August, but they might be, you know, now that it's a Zoom, it's easier for people to do a meeting. So if we know we're going to bring it back, you know, in September, then, you know, you and I can start trying to. to set up just sort of special meetings on this with the various business organizations. They're all on the task force. So we'll have an opportunity, uh, you know, to do that kind of presentation during that break, um, answer their questions, get them a little more information and bring it back then. That, that's sort of a good way forward, I think.
Patrick, is there any reason for the full option one that we wouldn't do that then? Maybe like you said, in September or October, maybe with all the options to do outreach on so we can get the feedback while we're at it instead of splitting it up then if that's our timeline?
Uh, yeah, I, I think we could get feedback on everything in that timeframe.
If we have the ordinance, you know, so we could use September to go to the various organizations for regular meetings or to special meetings and then bring the whole thing back hopefully in October, would that work, Patrick? Do you have enough time?
Yeah, I, I believe so. Yeah. I, I think, I think targeting that outreach for September timeframe, it makes a lot of sense. Um, and again, since we've got the ordinance drafted already, I mean, there's no time to, um, you know, to, needed to do that. Um, and, and also it, it allows us to explore some of the nuances and some of the, um, you know, we've got some exceptions in there that they could comment on as well. So anyway, so yeah, so I think that would be a, a good timing, uh, good timing to do that.
Councilman Wood? Uh, just a couple of comments. Um, you know, sometimes how we word things make a huge difference. So if, so as an example, charging you 25 cents for a disposable cup, what you could basically do is get a discount of 25% if you bring your own cup in, which I think is what Starbucks did before, uh, COVID-19. You know, if you brought your own cup in, you got to dime off the, the thing, a dime isn't a whole lot, but, and we, we, I think most people are used to bringing their reusable bags because they started charging for bags if you need it, you know, and this, that, that, there was an incentive and a lot of then what happened is a lot of organizations, when they met because they wanted to be branded, would give out free bags to people. So every time they went to the grocery store, they were carrying a reusable bag with the brand on it. Um, and I think that type of thinking is already in the wheel and we're, it's happening and we just need to nudge it along a little bit. So, um, those are my thoughts. The other thoughts that I had is if, if, if you, if you charged for, um, silverware, I call it silverware, flatware, you know, you could get a better brand of one versus a cheap one where the knife breaks as you try and cut through the chicken. You know, if you charge, say, if you want, if you want flatware, you know, it's going to cost, it's, it's an added charge of 10 cents or 15 cents, whatever it may be. And you're going to get something actually is a better, a better quality, but it's just wording again, how you word something versus it, we're, I think there's an assumption that all of this is free. And when you go to a foreign country, it's not free. You know, you want a napkin, a paper napkin, you pay for it in some countries. Here are people grabbing by the bolt. You know, it's, it's, it's a real mindset change of, of a disposable society that I think we're trying to nudge along to be a better society for our children.
I thank you for that, Councilmember. You know, I remember when Palm Springs, they fight over the, um, plastic bags, the plastic bags, um, in grocery stores and, you know, how that went. And people just, you know, it took a little while, but people got used to always, you know, keeping in their car, um, regular bags that can be reused, you know, long-term. And so the culture change is such a significant part of this, but it only happens when we set the rules. We know that, you know, we need that as part of it.
So I might amend my motion.
Okay.
I'll try. Uh, let's see. So, um, I would move to bring back option one and ordinance with option one to either a date certain, um, in end of September or early October, um, with a draft ordinance before that, that we can do outreach on with businesses and residents, um, so that we can make a decision in the fall. Does that encompass what we were discussing? Or is there someone else?
Yeah. And it sounds like the ordinance is pretty ready. So we'll have that, I think, within plenty of time.
I can second that.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Proton Hope. That's second by Councilmember Woods.
Mayor Protim? Sorry. So can I just clarify, do you want anything in two weeks? Or do I wrap it into the whole option one?
I think what I heard is that we would do all of option one, um, together unless...
I think, yeah, I think do that because if we're moving it at this pace, it lets, we still need to educate all the businesses, the restaurants, the bout, even those other things. So that's fine.
Okay.
My thinking is that it double, otherwise it would double up the process that we'd have to do it initially and then we have to do it again. Um, I think we do want input, though I was really persuaded by Councilmember Woods and his call for bold and immediate action. Um, but it, it seemed like that's where the council landed unless I read it wrong.
Mayor Protim Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
I'm.
Mayor Corrus?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Well, if we get this done in three months from now, that's bold and decisive, um, given how long it takes in government. So thank you for your work, um, Mayor Protim Hostage and Greg in the commission.
And a thank you especially to Roy Clark and Robert McCann, who chaired the Sustainability Commission's, um, Work Reduction Committee. They've done a lot of hard work and analysis. And thank you to Patrick, too.
Thank you. Move to new business. Item 5A is discussion of potential uses of our unfair coronavirus relief fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, this is a, a good news item. Uh, and we had it on here because we wanted to bring it to, to your attention. This is a part of the COVID, uh, cares, uh, money that's from the federal government that has been, um, through, through the states and then ultimately, uh, to the local governments. But this is a state initiative that has, uh, been part of the governor's revise. And the bottom line of this is the city of Palm Springs, uh, distribution of the portion is $585,000. Now, obviously, uh, cities across the state have received different amounts, uh, and that's all included in your staff report. Uh, but what we're recommending is in, is an eligible expense is the, the staff extra expenses that we've incurred, uh, throughout this COVID crisis and will continue, whether it's additional code enforcement officers and overtime and public safety. Uh, and the list is very long, including equipment and, uh, equipment and personal protection equipment that we've had to purchase. So one option in, in our recommendation is that, uh, we utilize these dollars for those purposes. Uh, the, the other benefit to that is these dollars must be spent by October 30th, which obviously, uh, we are able to do, um, very, very easily. There, there was one other item I would like to note that we are also eligible for certain funding under FEMA, 75% reimbursement because of the, uh, federal disaster declaration. Uh, we will still be submitting those dollars, uh, from different expenses. Uh, and so in essence, we'll be able to draw from both of these pots of money. Uh, with, with that, I would just note one other item that did come up from the, uh, Affordable Housing Subcommittee. We, we, there, there was the contract that we have with the Desert Healthcare District for additional team of social service workers. And I believe that Jay, that contract runs through November?
That's correct. The end of November?
The end of November. Uh, and so because of our budget reductions, uh, we had reduced from one team to two teams. Uh, the district was going to just fund the one team without our match. Uh, but, and that's an approximate $90,000 expense. So if council wanted to use these dollars, uh, towards that second social service team, uh, that would be an eligible expense as well. So with that, uh, members of council, we, we can answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Great. Uh, thanks. And, um, Councilmember Middleton and I, as budget liaisons, um, met with staff on this. Um, this, we spent more than this, clearly a lot more than this. So it would reimburse us. And then if it turns out, you know, in the fall, in September, that we're in better financial shape, we have total flexibility with what we use with our budget versus, um, this money. I do think since we have the contract to keep through November for the second crisis team, and we're hoping to get one, maybe two moving forward. Um, and those, that process, uh, Mayor Protim Holstich and I have talked to the county, talked to CBAG, talked to Desert Healthcare District, it's continuing. Uh, we didn't budget the $90,000 that we have to pay for, um, for them, uh, at least for this next phase of it. So it seems to make sense to use this money for that as well. Your way, Councilmember Middleton? Did you want to weigh in at all?
I, I agree completely. We've got, uh, documentable expenses that we can use to, uh, uh, claim this money. Let's claim it. And then, uh, uh, as we move forward with a rolling budget and we see how much revenue is coming in, all of this money, uh, that has already been appropriated to, to other accounts, uh, then becomes fungible and we can, uh, use it as we need going forward.
Just staff, just to confirm, um, I think Councilmember Middleton and I know this, but anything that we can get reimbursement from FEMA, knowing that it could take a year or two, we're not going to use this money for, right? We're, we're going to only use this for non-FEMA reimbursable expenses.
Question.
Good. That's correct, Mayor.
I, I don't, that was the question, actually. I just wanted to confirm that. David?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I think I didn't hear all of the question then.
So my question was that even though I know the FEMA reimbursement from history can take a year or two, anything we're going to, anything that's FEMA reimbursable, we're going to use for FEMA and anything that is not FEMA, FEMA reimbursable would come out of this goal. Correct?
That, that's our goal. There is some overlap, uh, but as we go through the, the numbers, and Nancy, our finance director, is anything that you would want to add to that question? She's been tracking it separately.
Yes. Some of the CARES Act is, covers Family First Coronavirus Response Act, which in theory, it pays for any employee that is, um, um, being quarantined at home. It covers their payroll for if they have to care for a family member or if they're unable to find childcare. So that's one of the main payroll items that we can use for the CARES. There's also items that we can, um, that FEMA will not reimburse. We're going to submit for them, but we don't think they're going to reimburse us for the computers that we purchased, for employees to work from home and some additional cell phones. Um, so we're going to go through these, um, with a fine tooth comb and see what we can do. And hopefully, you know, most of it will be covered by FEMA, but there are some, some items that FEMA won't cover that the CARES Act will in addition to straight time. So any, um, um, public safety or any, um, employees that have worked in specific areas for the COVID, straight time can be covered. And FEMA will not cover straight time. FEMA will only cover overtime.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Woods?
Dennis? Okay. Thank you. Sorry. I misunderstood what you said. Um, the question I have is on the crisis outreach team, you know, we had four, we're down to two. Um, do we have any sort of feedback or statistics on is four better than two and what kind of their caseloads are like or their interactions are like out there? Um, especially as we're trying to put services with, um, you know, our, our shelters and we're trying to merge more of that together. I'm just curious if it's an immediate need to have two more outreach or to replenish the two that we had to get rid of that we?
I think what we're talking about here is to keep, we have a contract to keep both teams through November, but it doesn't, that wasn't budgeted for, is my understanding. But we have a contract to do it. I think we're obligated to do that.
And, and I, I would note that the difference is with the two teams, we have seven day a week coverage with, uh, the one team, Jay, it's... With, with, with one team though, it goes down to, to, to five days. So it gives us the additional coverage on the weekends, particularly in as the, uh, you know, the problem hotspots seem to be continually rising. Uh, that, that's why we decided to go to the seven day coverage, coverage originally.
But, um, we do have data. You know, we haven't seen any, you know, the reports that we normally get from behavioral health that we contract with, we haven't seen during this because everyone's in this weird place. But if the police chief is still there, um, you know, maybe he can add his sense of, you know, working with the teams and the impact they have. But this isn't talking about keeping the second team permanently. We're looking for funding to do that. This is more just to cover them through the contract in November, as I understood it from staff, because we didn't budget for that. That's all. We're not sure why we didn't, but we did.
Yes. Having the second team has been extremely impactful for us, uh, not only in the city and dealing with the homeless seven days a week, uh, but it's a tremendous relief on the resources within the police department because without having a seven day a week coverage, which we've become accustomed, accustomed to, it would rely on the police officers to actually go pick up that extra, um, uh, contact over the weekend. And as we all know, the weekend has been fairly taxed over the past few weeks in dealing with all the, uh, regulations and, and so forth as it relates to COVID. So yes, having seven day a week coverage would, would help us tremendously.
But yes, I think the goal is to make sure, and the crisis teams work well with the other agencies, um, and refer and bring a lot of people to path of life. And we don't have enough information on the new shelter and how the hours are that yet, but hopefully we'll have that in a couple of weeks.
Other comments, questions, thoughts? The rest staff to move forward.
So just so we're clear, what is the motion? So to move forward with using this cover reimbursable costs? And that can include obligations we have under the contract on the crisis, on the crisis team through November. Motion by Councilmember Middleton. Okay. There's no second. Other ideas?
I'm happy to second, um, Councilmember Middleton's, um, motion. Um, we can go back to that. I'm happy to second that with the caveat that, you know, 90,000 percent spent for the crisis outreach team and that the rest is spent as appropriate for expenses that we incur, uh, due to COVID-19. Trying not to overlap with anything we could potentially get from FEMA. I don't know if that's a friendly amendment or not.
It is. Mayor Protim Hostage?
And so that would, would that have any limitation or it would be at staff's discretion? That's why I sat here trying to think through what that all meant. What would be included?
Well, but beyond the, yes, beyond the 90,000 for the social service team, the balance would be for staff costs related to COVID activities. So it would be salaries, equipment, uh, whatever would fall in that category is actually COVID related.
Do we have a sense primarily what that would go to?
Uh, well, a lot of it is for expenses already incurred, uh, and, and that's obviously in police and fire and paramedic and, and code enforcement, uh, you know, it, and, and actually even library and, and across, almost every department, there's expenses that would qualify. And, and Nancy, finance director, she, so you had your hand. Would you like to add to that?
Yeah, it covers, um, our costs, management costs, a council's cost. It will cover anybody's straight time, not overtime. And then also remember, um, we're only, basically these expenditures are only three months through this period and we have a few months left to go through this. So we're going to see probably a rise in this, especially if there's any, um, employees that get this and they have to quarantine at home. This is the funding we're going to use to pay for their salaries.
And I would note that what's different about this than the FEMA, uh, this is obviously straight time, not just the over, overtime expenditure. So that makes it... So that makes it certainly an easy way to distribute.
Thank you.
My assumption between computers and code enforcement, even just since last weekend, it's an example that we're probably spent beyond, well beyond what's being proposed here.
And that's sort of the frustrating part with the way the state allocated the money so differently, is other cities are going to be able to cover much more of their costs than we are, and have money left over to do other things with it. And that's why, you know, frustration over how that was done.
We're not making here any decisions regarding how money that gets freed up down the road is going to be spent. We're simply identifying how it is that we're going to accurately claim money that we are entitled to if we can submit a proper claim.
Any other questions or comments? Not, there's a motion, okay, Mayor Protim Holstich, you go off? No, okay. I don't see the mute button. Motion by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Holstich.
Yes.
Mayor Coors.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is item 5B, consideration of authorizing the purchase of a police body-worn camera system. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. There are two portions of this staff report we'd just like to highlight for you. One is the actual procurement formalities and the mechanics and the cost, and then the actual implementation and how they will be used and the purpose of them. I'm going to ask the chief to step to the microphone and explain that. But first, with regard to the procurement formalities, this is being requested purchase on a cooperative purchasing agreement. Basically, the amount of the equipment we're buying is lesser than most larger departments. And so the procurement manager has indicated through his research that using a cooperative agreement will get us the best price, so that's what's before you today. It's met those procurement formalities. And then with regard to the cost, when council approved the budget at our last meeting, you indicated that this was a priority to bring it forward. We've been into this process now and have it ready before you. So the budgeting is there. The one difference is with regard to the ongoing storage, cloud storage costs, which is approximately, going to be approximately $112,000 a year, beginning in year two, for the next four years of the contract, and that will be part of the annual police budget. So with that, I would turn it over to the chief, and he can give you the information with regard to why he's chosen this particular brand and how they will be implemented. Chief?
This has been a long time coming. The policy has been in place since July of last year. Prior to that, the department tested six different platforms, narrowed down to two. The selected platform is the only platform that has the ability to access footage prior to the officer activating the actual camera. So if there's a situation where there's a need to go back and get up to 15 seconds prior to the actual activation by the officer, we can access that. This platform also enables us to have a better understanding and clearer picture of the overall circumstances of a contact. For example, on a traffic stop, just the mere activation of the lights in the vehicle will activate the in-car camera system. And then when an officer steps out, it seamlessly takes over onto the body-worn camera as the officer approaches and makes contact with the people that they're stopping or contacting on the street. So it gives us a good overall picture of the overall interactions prior to the officer getting out of the car, again, with the camera system that's within the car, and then seamlessly going over onto the body-worn camera system.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. On the long-term operating cost, which is cloud-based backup, does that, do we have the, and I know we've gone to Microsoft 360, whatever it is, which is cloud-based as well, do they, are they separate entities, or can they be merged together for economies of scale?
That's a question I defer to Aaron.
I can take that one. Councilmember, those are completely separate cloud entities in that Microsoft runs their Azure platform with Office 365, where this vendor, who is WatchGuard Video, runs their own separate video cloud storage.
So do we have, I'm just looking at long-term maintenance costs again. Do we have to use their cloud storage, or can we get our own cloud storage? Can we competitively bid the cloud storage part of it, is what I'm wondering?
We could certainly look at that. Actually, one of the advantages we have is that we're using their total package, which means they support it all the way across the board. It's, you know, one number to call. When you start piecemealing that, you do get into issues where the vendors begin to point at each other, so there's a huge advantage support-wise into using their service.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see the body-worn camera policy is attached to that, and this is the first time that I'm seeing it in depth, and I have some questions. So my understanding is that that was previously negotiated with the police union to have a policy and to even allow body-worn cameras. Is that right? Could you explain for the public, who might be seeing this document for the first time, how that would, how that works?
Yes, absolutely. This policy was actually put together with a lot of back and forth with the city's labor attorney, Peter Brown, and with the police union's attorney, and this was the final product that was agreed upon.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
Yeah, just a comment. I know that the community's been asking for body cams for a long time. I think it's really important that we're actually getting them purchased. One thing, I'm not sure if I missed this or not, chief, but do we have a timeline of when these will be implemented? I'm not, maybe I missed you saying that.
That's a great question, and if Aaron can come back on board, it's going to take some coordination with our staff, the streets department, in making sure we get vehicles over to whatever location, so there's a quick turn time on installation. But Aaron may have additional information as it relates to timelines.
Our hope would be about four months. The lead time on the equipment that we'd order is around eight weeks, so that puts us at two months, and then install. There will be a bit of training, things like that to go through, so my goal would certainly be four months.
And would these all be happening at the same time, or would we, or would some officers get them and keep going?
That would be a management decision as to how the direction goes. Once we have everything up and running, we could certainly phase it. I don't know the answer to that side, the chief may know.
Yes, absolutely. What we could do is, obviously, the primary officers that we'll equip, the officers that have the most contact with the public, which would be our patrol force. So as we get vehicles online, they'd be the first ones to be outfitted, but I'm sure we can outfit the officers with body-worn cameras before we even outfit the vehicle. So whatever we can move on quicker, whether it be body-worn or vehicle, the primary personnel that it would be assigned to initially would be the patrol force, who has the most contact with the public.
Great, thank you. That's just my concern, is that there's so many officers, making sure that we're at least getting it going, instead of doing it all at once, which, so, thank you, it makes sense. But yeah, this is something that's been asked for for a long time. I know I spoke to Ms. Joanne Crawford in the neighborhood, and she was really happy to hear that we were getting them. I think, chief, you've probably heard her at community meetings, asking for a long time. So it's nice that we're able to move forward with this, and I'm just really looking forward to this being done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woods?
I think that this council has a commitment to this, by in very economically difficult times that we're in, that we've actually budgeted for this. So I think it shows a commitment on our city council to want this type of mechanism, as well as our police department. So, thank you. But the question I actually have is that, are these records then, can you do a public records request, and would our, if so, would our city clerk then go directly to the vendor for the piece, or does it require more administration on the police department's part?
Yes, it does. All these records are retained for a minimum of two years, and when there's a public records request, we'd be getting the city clerk involved, and as well as our city attorney, to determine if we can release all of the footage, or coordinate what needs to be redacted before it gets released.
And I would also note with regard to that, there's, anticipated there obviously will be additional requests, and a lot of departments obviously have to have additional resources to handle the higher level of requests. In talking through it with the chief, we, and the city attorney, we felt that we couldn't identify what those costs actually would be till we had some experience. The chief has indicated he wants to go forward, obviously, with the staff that he has in the records and city attorney, and then if that changes, obviously, we'll have to let you know. But we need a little bit of experience to see what that's going to be in terms of a resource need on the records.
Chief, I know that you and I discussed at one point, I'm not sure when, just creating some form of policy of review of these body cams, even when there isn't a request, which I know there's other departments who do that, just like periodic reviews, just to make sure that things are looking good, and I think you mentioned as well, having officers review footage, just so that they can see their interactions with the public and how they might come off, which might be different than what they think they're coming off. So can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm grateful for you bringing that up, because that is within the policy. Some sporadic reviewing by supervision, but also our training officers to pull the footage, to go over that with their trainees, and also for briefing training. So they can go over the footage and see the interactions and the capabilities of this system, and also the quality of the video and what gets covered. There's going to be a lot of that early on and ongoing, because officers need to determine where to best place that body-worn camera on their uniform that has some clear view in the footage, with minimal, you know, interruption or, you know, alteration as far as, you know, the equipment that they wear may throw the camera off. So there's going to be a lot of review of footage, so we can get it right, so we can provide the best coverage possible.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I'll move staff recommendation.
I will second it. Motion by Councilmember Woods, seconded by Councilmember Middleton.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Holstich.
Yes, and I just wanted to say, if I can, you're the chief for heading this and instituting best practices in our department, we really appreciate your leadership of the department. Thank you.
Mayor Coors.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
The next item is 5C, consideration of taking a position regarding the California Schools and Local Communities Funding Act. Staff report, please.
Honorable mayor and city council, at the city council meeting of June 25th, Councilmember Middleton requested that the city council consider taking a position regarding the California Schools and Local Communities Funding Act. This will be a ballot measure on the November 3rd, 2020 statewide election. The act seeks to constitutionally change property tax law enacted under Proposition 13, as it applies to commercial and industrial properties, which would result in an estimated $12 billion in local revenues to schools and local government. And I defer to Councilmember Middleton as the requesser of this item.
Thank you. I want to compliment staff on a really well-written report regarding this. For those of us who were in California in 1978, Proposition 13 was passed, it was passed as a measure to ensure that residents in their residence, in their homes, would not lose those homes because of increasing taxation rates. And we heard during the campaign, a number of stories detailing individuals living on fixed incomes, who had been in their homes for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, who were finding themselves priced out of their homes because of the increased value that that home had reached. What we have, though, is also a measure that provided to commercial property the same guarantees. And with commercial property, what we have also seen is with extremely large corporations, that it has become very common for them to design ways so as to acquire new property over the course of multiple years, so as to not trigger the reevaluation of the cost of their property. And so we see many, many properties that are incredibly undervalued in terms of what it is that is on the tax rolls. So I fundamentally believe that while this will increase revenue for schools in particular, and for local government, what is most important that we are doing in this initiative, if it's passed, is returning fairness to the property tax system when it comes to commercial property. And there are provisions here that will exempt up to $500,000 small businesses, and I think this is something that I would like to see a plum spring and our progressive voice stand up in support of. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Middleton. Any questions or comments? I'm happy to weigh in, and thank you for bringing this. You know, it was sold as a way to, you know, so seniors wouldn't have their property taxes go up on their house and no longer be able to afford it. And seniors and others don't have the benefit, corporations do, if they buy new property to do it the way corporations have figured out how to get around the law, when a new property is purchased. I won't share my views on the rest of Proposition 13, since that's not on the table, but this loophole that has allowed corporations to do this has really impacted the services and our schools, and I support this. There is no other comments or questions? We can take a motion.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Mayor Protim Holstich.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Coors. Mayor Kors.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is five D, consideration of issuing a letter to legislative representatives regarding the city's allocation of funding in relation to COVID-19. Um, there is no staff report. Um, this is really more to get direction for Councilmember Middleton and I on the issues we've discussed, um, in drafting that letter and also from the rest of council, um, and sending it and working, uh, with the city attorney on the language and also working to build sort of support from other cities and legislators, uh, to really publicize this and get attention and use it to really ask that the states help fill some of the huge gap they left between us and the other cities. Yeah, Councilmember Garner.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with you and appreciate the things you've already shared about it. I think it's really important that it's, it's brought to people's attention. It's obviously a huge difference in funding and, and that's just unacceptable. I think our, our community is obviously being hit very hard and, and it needs to be considered. We need equitable funding, right? Not the way that it's being done right now. I, I appreciate you moving forward and I, I trust anything the city attorney does.
Isn't that nice? I agree. Thank you. Any other comments?
I do.
Yeah, please.
I think what's going to be important is more than just writing the letter, which Mayor, you, you alluded to, it's really going to have to be an enormous amount of outreach. You know, I won't use the word lobbying, but it's going to really be talking to people about why we need this and what our predicament is and those that, um, sign on with us. So whether that be through the council or it be through staff, probably best through council, there's really going to need to be, going to, to be effective, need to be a follow-through and, and some, some effort put into it.
Yeah, and Councilmember Middleton, who's our, um, representative from the League of Cities, uh, and I have already started sort of laying that out and speaking with our legislators about how we can build a statewide effort here. Uh, it just can't be here in the valley, although that's an important piece because the data here is so staggering and the difference compared to just the city of Riverside, uh, where, where more residents receive so much less money. But we need, you know, all the other cities to weigh in and, uh, make, make this an important issue because, you know, our, our residents and businesses are hurting and other cities who are part of that group of 13 are getting a lot more support for their residents and businesses, um, beyond just covering their staff costs. And, um, so it's going to be an important thing and I think it's going to turn into a major, um, project and a lot of our time, but I, we both believe it's really a worthwhile thing. So.
We need to try to build as much support, uh, for this across the state as we can. Uh, and there are over 500 other small cities, uh, that were told, uh, that their residents are only worth 12 bucks.
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor Protim.
Thank you. I think those are great suggestions and, um, I'd ask that we do press on this as well because I think our residents, um, are also helpful, uh, to do outreach, um, and to advocate because, you know, we as residents are getting such an insignificant amount compared to what now wealthy residents in, in Los Angeles or other places are getting. And it really is an issue of statewide equity that Councilmember Garner said because not, I mean, um, inland California and places like the Coachella Valley are already so significantly disinvested compared to wealthier, uh, you know, coastal regions that have more, um, business, they have more different economies, they have the state making investments and jobs and economies in those regions. And we're so far behind that we deserve, um, our residents deserve more than, you know, an equal share. They deserve an equitable share, um, because we are hardest hit. You know, our residents are the ones who are working in minimum wage jobs in only a tourist economy. Um, you know, that's not sustainable and we need the state to make investments where it's equitable. And we've heard the governor talk a lot about regional equity and talk about inland California, um, but in the legislature as well, um, but, you know, when they're making these investments, it really doesn't represent, um, equity for our residents. So I just ask that, that some of that be included in the letter because it, it is the talking points of a democratically controlled, um, government, um, that cares about equity and investing in, in disadvantaged regions like ours. So, um, and that we include press so that our residents should contact, um, the governor and our statewide elected officials, um, asking why we're only worth $12 when other residents are worth more and they might have more opportunities available to them and their cities aren't as hard hit and their economies aren't as hard hit. And they're going to rebound. Um, the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership has data showing that we're the first hit in recessions and we're the last to rebound in recessions because of our, you know, we're a tertiary market and because our economy is so, is, is not diversified. So I think it, thank you for bringing it, such an important issue, and I think we should fight as hard as we can for our residents and also for the inland California and, and our regions that are left behind too often.
Thank you. I, I think it's important how we structure the, the pro, I'm going to say the program because it's more than just a letter. It's, it's, it's really a program that, that we're here. Um, and I say that because there are many small cities that are not suffering like we're suffering, um, that are actually quite wealthy, um, both in Northern California and here in Southern California. So how we structure it for that equitability is, is, is going to be important and who we bring on as partners or don't bring on as partners.
I'm glad Councilmember Woods brought that up because, uh, the equity is very much here, but, uh, we are going to know within, uh, a matter of weeks, uh, exactly how much revenue was lost in city after city, uh, in, uh, the first and second quarter of this year. And the data is already available for how much revenue was lost, or excuse me, what the revenue was in previous years. Uh, so we, we will know within a matter of weeks who really has been hurt, uh, because of COVID. And, uh, uh, there has to be some accounting and allocation based on, uh, the actual harm that has been done.
I think part of the importance of, you know, having legislators who represent, um, more rural areas, you know, not the big 13 cities, um, as part of this is one, they have the access obviously to the governor and leadership on, on a regular basis, but two, you know, getting their advice on how we structure this in the best possible way to get, so we get results. You know, there are several avenues we could take it and, you know, we have a letter that lays out the three points, but what is going to be the best strategy to possibly get something through that actually gets us a result of getting more funding for the cities that weren't getting it that needed. Um, having, you know, their input is going to be really important on that as well as the League of Cities, you know, that does that lobbying on our behalf. Thank you. That's all really great input and advice. I love the word equitable for this. Do we have a motion?
A motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Garner, seconded by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hostage.
Yes.
Mayor Kors.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great. Thank you. Our next item is discussion and direction regarding public comment on non-agendized items. Is there a staff report? I know I asked for this, so there may not be one.
Honorable mayor and city council, um, at the last meeting, uh, Mayor Kors did ask for the city council to discuss and consider, um, any modifications you would like to make to the public comment period in consideration that the public comment periods have been, uh, occurring later in the evening. Um, it, from staff's perspective, uh, we, we, uh, do suggest two, two options. One would be either combining, uh, the non-agendized public comment with the agenda public comment, which would occur earlier in the evening, or setting a specific time to take the non-agendized public comment. Um, you know, for instance, if you were to set it at 9:00 PM, um, you would conclude whatever agenda item you are currently working on and then after that, uh, take public comment shortly after 9:00 PM.
Thank you. Uh, so, you know, my concern, and I think it's more so now because people are calling in, um, you know, the, you know, the issue of, uh, council meeting, the main focus is doing the people's business and the agenda items. And what used to happen was sometimes we wouldn't get started till 9:00 or 9:30 because there'd be a lot of people who wanted to talk about something that wasn't on our agenda and we made that change and it, you know, allowed us to get through our agendas. Um, and you think that's helpful. I think if we combine them, we go back to that same problem. But I do think calling people at home who may have worked the next day, of kids who are sleeping at 11:30 or 12 at night is not a good way forward. Um, so I was thinking either we set a set time, um, at nine or we, we evaluate at nine on where we are. Um, but, you know, I, I want to at least have that conversation because I think now, you know, more people are doing public comment typically than we had before because they can call in. But I, I think when it gets, you know, much past 10 o'clock to call someone at home doesn't work. Councilmember Garner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a big proponent of having public comment earlier. Um, I know it's, I understand that it's difficult to have it at the top of the meeting because of the amount of public comment we get in Palm Springs and it makes it harder for us to continue. Um, but I find that public comments to be so valuable, um, and it, it is disappointing to not have them happen because it's so late or to possibly wake somebody up who doesn't quite realize that we're going to call them that late. Um, so whatever we can do to, to make it a little bit easier, even, I'm, I'm fine with the option two of, of allowing people to submit voice memos, but I understand that that means that there's, again, probably more. Um, but I'm, I'm open as well to just seeing how it goes and trying different things. We want to start with at nine o'clock, taking public comment, um, and seeing how that works. And if it doesn't work, maybe trying voice memos or, or however it is, but to me seems reasonable, just figure it out.
Yeah. And, you know, the more we can let people know about public comment is available by email and forget it at a time, it really helps us read it and think about things. I mean, those are agenda things, but on non-agenda items as well, um, I'm very open to voice memos. I think that, you know, is a way we can do it late at night without people having to stay up since we can't respond to them and we're not going to be able to talk about non-agenda items. I think that's a really good thing if we can try it as well. Um, and maybe we try those two things together to start. Uh, because we're fine, you know, if it's 11:30, we don't have the agenda, we're all open to stay and listening to that. Yeah, Councilmember Garner.
So one thing about the voice memos too, I think, um, in order to make it more reasonable for us as well is, um, it could be that voice memos have to be sent during the council meeting, right? Or during a certain time. It, we don't have to accept the voice memos all week long if that's going to end up being too much. Because obviously, even though it allows the public to go to sleep, if we're sitting here until 1:00 AM listening to voice memos, that's, that's not really going to work for us either.
No, that's okay. So maybe we, you know, we try sort of the, you say, the nine o'clock, see if it works. You know, if we have too many, we're going to have to adjust so we can get our business done, of course. Um, but, Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, I, I would like to see us, uh, pause at nine o'clock and, uh, take any public comment that we need, uh, and get that, uh, it is so important to hear from, uh, the public. Uh, but we are, uh, in very unusual times and, uh, none of us know how much longer we will be meeting, uh, virtually in this fashion. And, uh, as soon as it is safe for us to get back where we can see the public and the public can see us in person, I think it's so important for us, uh, to do so. Uh, we've, uh, we've done a remarkable amount of work using this, uh, medium, uh, but, uh, it's no substitute for being able to, uh, see the public with our own eyes and for them to see us during the course of the meetings.
Thank you. Who else?
Um, I might propose for 9:30 because our meetings, you know, that only gives us, you know, it, it just, our meetings have a tendency to run long and I think 9:30 gets us there before the 10 o'clock hour, um, to do it. Um, I do want to congratulate the city clerk for what appeared to be tag teaming, um, on some of the comments today, which got us through them much quicker without the delays in between. So I want to thank the city clerk for that as well because that also took up quite a bit of time.
Thank you for pointing that out. That really, really helped. We, you know, I'm fine with 9:30, other than just to throw out and, you know, this will be a work in progress, uh, but especially during this parade, which could last, you know, months if not longer, um, you know, the possibility of starting meetings a little earlier, um, you know, ever 5:30, which will give, you know, so, because people can now call in, you know, people can call in from anywhere. It's not that people have to get home then come into the city council chamber. So that's just something else I wanted to throw out as an idea that might help. So, cause, you know, we don't start discussions like on the budget till 11:15 because of a lot of public comment. That's not a good way for us to do city business and that's on the agenda, you know, that, and, you know, of course we're going to do that for as long as it takes. But if we start even a half hour earlier, an hour earlier, it would allow some more of that. So I don't know how people feel about that, at least temporarily.
I am all for starting earlier.
Starting earlier if we end earlier.
Well, that would be the hope.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm okay with starting a little bit earlier, um, as long as there's a little bit of flexibility there because I know some people are getting off work and, um, want to, if they're calling in at the top for something that's on the agenda to give public comment, I, I'd want to make sure that we got them in. Um, and I think that people are generally reasonable. They'll, they let us know if they have a conflict and.
Yeah, I mean, if we started it, I wouldn't want to start before five for that reason. Um, and if we let people know when they call in, if, if they, you know, want to be at the beginning or end of it, you know, some people might want to be near the end for those reasons, um, it might be worth trying that as well. Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I really like the idea of having a set time for public comment because I think it provides notice to the community, um, when they can participate and they can set aside that time. Um, I think it's, it's difficult to participate the way it is now because they don't know if it's going to be 10:00 PM or 1:00 AM. Um, so I would support that, that time. I was actually going to ask that it be a little earlier, um, because I know my friends with kids or, you know, people are going to bed earl, you know, seniors are going to bed earlier, um, and 9:30 is still kind of late because if there's 10 comments, you're going to get still, it, it will still run late. Um, but, but I think we should be flexible. I mean, fundamentally, we should ask the community what works for them and we don't get to do that because it's late, um, you know, and, and it's hard to engage people right now. So I love the idea of having voice memos and having a, whatever the city clerk's recommendation is that people can submit. So if they are too tired or, uh, have sleeping kids or whatever it is, they can just submit it during the meeting and have it played or something like that. I think the more accessible we can make public comment, um, the better because I think that's our primary job is to listen to the public and then we can talk less and we can shorten our business. Um, and, and we should allow for more time. So, you know, I'm, I know we're not opening it all up and I wasn't on the last council when they decided this, um, but I'm interested in other models that cities do because I know that they'll do, um, public comment for agenda item when people do have the benefit of a staff report, um, and, and can make more informed decisions. And I, I don't know about you all, but I get constant texts during the meetings confused about when and where to speak and public. about when and where to speak and public comment, and it's not as accessible as I think we should make it. So I'm all for making it as open and accessible as possible, and I think this is a really good start to have a set time, like 8:30 or 9:00, and allow voice memos.
So, one question on voice memos, are those, would those all have to be played in a meeting? Could they be sent to us and posted on the website? How would that work? Because obviously, if we get 50 voice memos, we could be here until 3:00 in the morning. So maybe if we made it clear, those are sort of like email ones that we'll get, and we can even put them on the website so people, other people can hear the meetings, you know, with the minutes or however it is? That would avoid the problem, I think, that was raised about so many opposed.
Well, I would ask staff if, you know, staff is obviously working during the meeting already. If, if voice memos even work for them during the meeting? You know, I, I'm not sure. So it's a question, I guess, I have of staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Woods. Yes, voice memos, as Mayor Coors suggested, that would actually be a great idea. Trying to accept voice memos during the meeting and playing them would be very challenging. But to gather them either before the meeting or during the meeting and then providing them to the city council, that is much more doable.
I think that works. I think 9:00 sounds like a good compromise to try, and we'll see how it goes. And if people want to try at the next meeting to start at 5:00 or 5:30, just to give us a little more time upfront, which will, if you have a preference on those two.
About 5:30?
I'm fine with that. So I think the direction, since we don't need a motion, I don't think, is to start. Try starting at 5:30 and having a set time for non-agenda item public comment at 9:00 PM. We'll see how that goes, adjust as we move on. And the quicker we finish this, the quicker we can start calling people.
I do, although, this is a little ironic, who we're talking and we should be calling people.
I know. I should have switched these, actually, I should have.
Um, I do want to ask staff, we can talk offline, but I just, I want to ask if there's a way to have video on the Zoom call for public comment? Because I do agree with Councilmember Middleton. I really like seeing people's faces and who's speaking, and I think that's important for people who want it. Is it not a capacity for us to do that on Zoom? Because of, I know that there were Zoom hackers and pirates, Zoom pirates and stuff. Maybe Erin, could you explain sort of, or the city clerk, if that's possible?
Well, Erin Brown is here as well. Staff does have concerns. There's a phenomenon, I can't say that word. There is an issue with Zoom bombs where there have been cases where persons during council meetings have displayed inappropriate videos, also made inappropriate racial comments. Really, they're just antagonizing the city council with no purpose of actual city business. And so that has been staff's concern with having the public on the Zoom calls.
So they could do that in public at a meeting. How's it different than going in person?
There's a level of anonymity when you're not doing it in a meeting because, you know, you see that face. You have the ability in Zoom to impersonate, to use a different picture, whatever you want to do. So that's the single biggest concern.
Okay, thank you.
It's probably harder to do the pornographic things that some of us have seen on meetings in person. You know, the surprise, you'd see it sort of start and fall between the first. But I agree with, I agree with those comments, right? I do think that seeing people is really helpful. So, okay, so I think you have direction? Anthony, David on this?
Yes, we have direction, and if there's any follow-up action that's necessary, either through the municipal code or we'll bring Bracken appropriate action.
So if I could just clarify, if, so we're going to start city council meetings at 5:30. So then, would you be okay with closed session then at 4:00 or 3:30?
3:30.
So...
Is that good with everyone? Right, and, you know, we always can look, given the Zoom world we're in, if that doesn't work to do it earlier, of doing that the day before, right? I mean, closed session can almost be anytime. Doesn't have to be right before a meeting, which might make all of our lives, you know, so these aren't as long for staff and council. One thing, when we're meeting in person, because it's really helpful, we're all there. But with Zoom meetings, we could do a closed session on the day before. So just something to think about, maybe we can talk about...
It's a good idea. I'd be interested in staff's recommendation, but it's a good idea. I mean, again, with public comment, people are required to give public comments before closed session at 3:00 or 4:00. It's hard, I would have never been able to participate in that as a working person. So it's an interesting idea.
Right, and none of us are really going out much, you know, at night right now. So if we did closed session, you know, after work hours, you know, 5:30 on the day before or something, that might work. If that worked for everyone. It'll make our time list not as long, so our brains are in better shape. So David, Jeff, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, we'll run into some other commission meetings likely because they're all starting at 5:30 now, and so they've all readjusted their schedules.
Okay, so let's look at that, please. Councilor Garner, did you want to?
Nope, that was it, just, I think we should...
Move on.
See what it is, but, but yeah, let's do the public comment.
Yeah, okay.
So it's just like, we're moving closed session to Wednesdays? The day before the council meetings?
I thought it was just review, for staff to see if that was possible, how it conflicts, all of that, to discuss at another time.
Okay, understood, thank you.
I agree.
So the next item, public comment on non-agenda items. This time it's been set aside for members of the public to address the city council. Items of general interest within the subject, not a jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Uh, city clerk, will you please start contacting speakers via telephone?
Hello, Renee Brown. You're live with the city council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Am I on?
Yes, you're live.
Okay, first of all, I'm speaking as a lifelong member of Palm Springs, 66 years. And I am very much against the Frank Bogart statue, not because the history of it, but because I really do feel it is, I really do feel it's, it does nothing toward helping racism, you know, ending racism. It is, it's symbolic, but it doesn't take any step to heal or assist. I think it's much more dangerous for short-term rentals if you really talk about danger, when you talk about not having any moderate income rentals or having very few. I think that's much more damaging. And there's part of the things we could do today instead of trying to delve into the past and straighten that out. Anyway, that's just how I feel. And, you know, I hope the city council will take into consideration that there are many, many people who have lived here for many, many years that believe that the statue should stay, not just because it's a Frank Bogart, but because it symbolizes our Western past, which is a very much a big part of the history of Palm Springs. Anyway, that's all I have to say. In a way, thank you to the council for listening to me.
Thank you, and, thank you, and we'll disconnect.
Hello?
Hello, Brad Anderson. You're live with the city council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Great, thank you, thank you. This is Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Ensmarage. Thank you for allowing me to talk this evening. I just happened to review some of your meeting on moving the meeting times and, and I disagree, you shouldn't be moving times of the meetings and closed session to different days. It should correspond with that meeting of that day. And, and, and you got to remember, I'm sure you remember, I don't want to scold you, but this is the public's business, and it's not for the council's convenience. And I understand you run very long meetings, and maybe you can divide your meetings or have a meeting every week if you need to, because people need to be involved in these decisions that you make. And, and again, I just want to emphasize the way, you're the only city that conducts meetings in such fashion where you don't allow the hearing item to be heard or have the public address the hearing item at the time of the hearing when the council hears. And that's very crucial for the public because staff reports and comments from the board, and even if you remove an item from the agenda, the council, when the public gives prior comments, they're not aware of this. So they're, it's wasted effort on their part. And, and public comments should be at the beginning of the meeting. And believe it or not, you might have an easier meeting because people would not stay tuned after that, but that's my belief. That's it, and, and again, I will be looking for, I will be looking toward it, but I will be addressing this matter further, and I hope you have the foresight to arrange meetings for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Hello, Janil Hunt. This is the Palm Springs City Council. You're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Oh, okay. Hi, hello, my name is Janil Hunt. I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for listening to you today. I'm here to speak to you about the petition to remove the Frank Bogart statute. Those of you sitting on city council may at some time have heard of Section 14, but truly doesn't understand, may not understand how families have been impacted or affected by when they were in Section 14. Now, my granny is a Crawford, so I was, I grew up hearing about Section 14. And I want you to sit back and try to imagine this as I try to replay a story for you that was told to me many times by my granny and other relatives that lived on Section 14. Imagine being woken up one day early in the morning to loud bulldozers and people running and screaming, children hollering, looking for their mothers because they were out playing with their neighbors or with their other family members. Being asked, what are you doing? Asking people, what are you doing? Those people couldn't give them a straight answer with saying that you have to get off the land, you have to vacate, you have to evacuate, without any explanation, only to grab what they could, maybe not even being able to grab their essentials, all of their essentials or their memorabilia. This is a story that was told to me over and over again, and that's only just the beginning. My granny, Addie Crawford, wasn't able to get all of her belongings from her property before it was bulldozed. You know, we used to talk about Section 14. And to think that even the mayor, Frank Bogart, who was the mayor at the time, wouldn't even give an apology to the black people there because he felt that it wasn't warranted, or the city council. I'm not going to take too much of your time, but I just want to say that there have been a number of families that have been, in fact, impacted and affected by the bulldozing of Section 14 and with Frank Bogart joining forces with the Native Americans and not even considering, having any consideration for where were those black people going to go? No, it didn't directly affect me, but it affected my family.
Ms. Hunt?
No, this is a moment.
Ms. Hunt?
I'm sorry?
Your time is over, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect.
Hello?
Hello, Dieter Crawford. You're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, thanks. Good afternoon, mayor, staff, council. My name is Dieter Crawford. I live in the Desert Highland Gateway Estates neighborhood. My family has lived here in the city of Palm Springs for over 60 years. I just want to thank you guys for approving the body cameras finally. It's greatly appreciated, but I'm really here tonight to talk about race relations. I want to thank you for creating the listening sessions that are coming up. I think they will be very valuable. As the last speaker before me just said, black residents have a long history of distrust with the city of Palm Springs dating back to Section 14 and the removal of people of color from the property. The California Attorney General in 1968 called it a city engineered Holocaust. And the Frank Bogart statute petition. I just would like to ask you guys to take a look at that. It has garnered over 2,000 signatures on change.org. At least we could think about relocating it, if possible, to Bogart Trail. And then, last but not least, the Desert Highland Unity Center. I just want to talk a little bit about that and the racism incident that happened up there the other night. I really believe it was a hate crime and that the city should acknowledge it as a hate crime. And maybe we can at least put a restraining order on this gentleman. I think that he's, it's very dangerous for members of the community and for children at the community center for him to be walking around and able to return to the property. Once again, my name is Dieter Crawford. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dieter, and we'll disconnect. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Great, thank you. Thank everyone who called in and stayed up to speak. We'll be able to get to you at 9:00 in two weeks. The next item, the city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development. City manager, anything to share with us?
I think, Mayor, if you do have the tentative upcoming meeting schedule, I believe you have those. Next week's meeting, or two weeks meeting on the 23rd, there's two presentations, the vacant building ordinance, and there are about four or five other items. But of note is the upcoming study sessions and future items, and you may not want to, or have answers specifically tonight, but I think going forward, as we start to get a little better handle on the agendas and they're not as busy, which of these items would be priorities for council so we can make sure that we get them moved to the agenda as soon as practicable?
That was sort of funny. Have we ever had agendas that weren't this busy, David? At least in my five years, it's rare. But that said, yeah, maybe at the next meeting. If we can get that sent to us separately, you know, like before the meeting or included with our agenda packets, because we get sent so much stuff, so we can have that downloaded. You know, I looked at it, but I don't have it in front of me, so...
And just, we also want to make a check in case there's something that's missing off this list, and your review and feedback would be helpful on that regard as well. Thank you.
Anything from council?
Yes, I do. As the cat tries to close my computer on me. So one of the things that I might have to consider is housing and rent control issues. I know that we're limited by state law and how much we can do with rent control, but I know that there are some things that can be done in cities to help renters and our long-term residents because I'm very concerned with how many people that are fleeing cities. Houses that have been on the market for years and years and years on my parents' street just sold. And I were seeing that all over this city. And I... And I, I'm very concerned for our renters and concerned for myself as a renter. The prices here are crazy in comparison to, uh, the wages. So I would really love it if, um, there was support for bringing forth some different ideas of what we can do to, to make sure that Palm Springs is still affordable for all of our residents, uh, and not just, uh, people who have the money to, to live here.
You know, thank you. And on that, for the city attorney, I know Affordable Housing Subcommittee have talked with the city attorney about some ideas. Is something that we have enough information to bring as a discussion item at this point? Or do we need to do more before we can do that?
Uh, I think so. Uh, before COVID, uh, the, um, the, the previously formed Subcommittee, now the liaisons, uh, directed us to do some research and so our office has some information that, that we could bring forward at, at one of the next, uh, upcoming meetings.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Thank you for raising that. We, we were moving towards that before the COVID emergency and so now seems like a really important time, uh, to discuss that and get direction from council on how to move forward. Thank you. Anyone else?
I was just going to add that on that issue, I think what is important is to outline programs that are currently available. I don't, I don't, you know, um, the county has programs, a lot of different charitable organizations have programs. And I, I don't know is there's a consolidation of those programs in any one location and it's very fragmented for somebody who's trying to get any of those services. And maybe we could be, if nothing else, a clearinghouse for that information like we are with COVID.
And there is stuff on the website about, for renters, um, when you go to the COVID link at the top of the website, there is a link for renters that has, I think, all of the programs, but you can ask our, um, economics development director to make sure those are all there. Thank you. I did have one question for the city attorney. On the update to the vacant building ordinance, given some of the buildings that seem to be getting worse, um, is that something we can do as an urgency ordinance at the next meeting?
Um, our office can certainly look at that and, and see if, if the findings can be made. Generally, you've got, you've got to find something that is, uh, really severe and, and timely. Certainly the COVID has exasperated some of the, the vacancies. We'll, we'll look at it and bring something back.
Okay, thanks. Um, and the only other thing, um, I want to just put on the list, I don't think, uh, it's going to happen in the next couple of meetings, but, uh, Mayor Proton Holstich and I, through his business and economic development liaisons, we're starting to work, uh, with that, um, effort on sort of a vacant storefront, uh, ordinance. And given the situation, it's likely we'll have more of those. So, um, just want to share with council that we've been emailing the city attorney to set up a meeting for us to sort of put that back into track and, you know, just to keep it on the master list or something we need to bring back sooner rather than later, but I know we, we still need some work. Mayor Proton Holstich?
Thank you. Um, just responding in part, um, to all of the public comments we heard tonight and that we've heard in the last few weeks, um, and this national conversation about racial justice and racism and the history of our city. Um, I know that the mayor had, you haven't talked about it, but published, um, a list of, of items. I know the committees come and ask for a list of items, um, including, you know, a formal apology for the city's role in Section 14. Um, obviously, uh, we're getting a lot of public comment about the Bogart statue and other items and also actionable policies. Um, so I just want to list that up as urgent, um, and ask the city council to consider, you know, what can we do right now? What would be meaningful now? And then what is the action that we need to plan for? So that, you know, is our hope to hear from the listening sessions that are going to happen, um, first on July 18th. And then we're going to have, um, you know, that's where we want that input. And then we're going to have more, um, listening sessions as well. Please don't make that listening session only about the statue. That's not currently in front of the city council. And I think we need to have a broad conversation about what the city council can do and what would be meaningful for our residents. But I just wanted to, um, say that we should, when we talk about, maybe at the next meeting, you know, what are our items of action and what can be considered, that we include the urgency that we're hearing from residents and then what we could do right away and not wait on. Because I think people have waited too long.
No, I agree. And so, especially as we look at agenda setting, I think we can discuss this. Um, obviously I had some initial ideas, we've heard a lot more ideas, um, but sort of to your point, I agree, I, we were all sort of waiting for the listening session before we moved forward. Um, but then I do think there are some things we can do initially and some obviously that are going to take longer. Um, and I don't know if we want to have that as a discussion item at the next meeting. You know, what we want to bring back, sort of shorter, or we want to do it in the agenda setting portion at the next meeting? So I know, um, Mayor Proton Holstich and Councilmember Garner are working on that. So I'd love to get your, your advice on how you'd like us to move these forward.
Thanks. Yeah, I think we can work on that and I would like to discuss it at the next meeting and we can bring forth options for consideration. And if anyone has anything additional, we can of course discuss it as well.
I agree.
Thanks for raising that. Anything else? No one wants? Okay. So the next regular city council meeting will be on Thursday, July 23rd, 2020, at 5:30 PM. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone who stayed up with us, um, or is watching it af- after this has been done. Thank you for council and staff for all your work. And I hope everyone has a good night and a safe rest of your week and weekend. Night, everyone.
Thank you.